The August tenth, Twalton City Council meeting. Welcome to Zoom land again in these times of COVID. Tonight, we have a few items on our agenda. First thing is public comment. And public comment is an opportunity for anyone who would like to comment on something that is not on tonight's agenda. To go ahead and chat with the council about it, please leave how, please limit your comments to about three minutes. And this is your opportunity to address the council in a free and impartial manner. So I have a few people signed up. You don't have to be signed up. I'll go with the people who have signed up already. And then if someone has not signed up, if you click on the participants button at the bottom of the Zoom. Interface, it'll pop up the forty eight people who are here and you always can click on the raise hands and. We'll recognize you that way. So first up is Scott Mitten.
Mayor Rubenick and members of the city council is Lumbos and members of city staff. Thank you for the opportunity to share a brief comment with you this evening. On tonight's agenda, there's a proposed plan text amendment for your consideration regarding property bounded by Boons Ferry Norwood Roads. I have lived within a short walk of that property for over twenty years and drive on Boons Ferry in Norwood virtually every day. I'm not going to try and persuade you whether or not to approve the proposed amendment. Reasonable arguments can be made both ways, and indeed, our city planning commission split four to three on their own recommendation. My purpose tonight is to remind you that just six months ago, though it seems an eternity, prior to the start of the COVID nineteen pandemic. For the murder of George Floyd at the hands of an abusive police force, the number one crisis facing our city was housing. Too many of our fellow citizens, friends and family struggle to pay rent, own a home, or even find a place to live. While many proposals have been made to address the housing crisis, the only way to significantly do so is by building more housing. It's the most basic economic fact of supply and demand. Tonight, you may hear from citizens opposed to building more homes due to increased traffic. I too hate traffic. You may also hear from citizens opposed to cutting down trees. I hate cutting down trees. But more important to me than trees or traffic is addressing the housing needs of real families in our community. Whether tonight in considering the proposed plan text amendment or in future meetings regarding the property bound by Boons Ferry in Nora Road. Please don't lose sight of the primary goal. We need to build more housing. So hold the developer accountable to keep some trees at the north end of the property and to provide the needed infrastructure to facilitate traffic flow. But please don't stand in the way ultimately of building homes for families. Thank you.
So Scott, what I'll do is we'll note that. I'm assuming this was testimony and related to PTA. Because this was citizen comment where it's things that are on the agenda tonight. But we know what you said, and I've got it noted that you made comments in relationship in relating to the PTA. Okay.
Thank you for letting me go out of order, but mayor.
No problem. Next up, Dan Cobb.
There we go. Okay, I'm unmuted. So I. Witnessed the earlier meeting I had today. This is the first city council meeting I watched and it was educational for me and thanks a lot for that. It brought to me a lot of concerns. I have three or four questions about that. Only one thing is that it appears as though our current tax base is not sufficient as it is today. To take care of the responsibilities we have to maintain the city as it is today in terms of infrastructure and parks and all the other things we talked about. That's kind of a concern. Our, our tax base should pay for our current obligations. That's how most people try to run the finances and that's how most businesses try to run their finances. The additions you're talking about in the urban renewal plan are areas that don't even belong to the city of Twalton yet. So that's not really urban renewal. That's growing the city. And it appears to me that you're growing the city in order to grow the tax base to take care of funding shortfalls that you have today. That's a big concern. That means that financing and funding has been kind of mismanaged for a while. Now, if the strategy is to continually grow the city in order to cover shortfalls in funding, what you have is a policy scheme. So I think we need to kind of come to terms with why the heck that is the case. Growing infinite growth, however slow you think you're managing, however, however you want to characterize it. Continuous growth is another word for cancer. So if you like Oregon because it's open and spacious and beautiful. But your strategy to maintain it is to grow it into. Houses and roads and streets and heat islands, you're kind of ruining the Oregon that we all love. And we need to come to terms with the financial problems we have rather than just growing the tax base. That's my comment.
Thank you. Next up is Paul Pennington.
Good evening, Mayor, with Nick and city council members. My name is Paul Pennington. My two sisters and I own one of the two pieces of property you will be discussing this evening. The one that Venture is under contract purchase. Together with the property that Lennar is proposing to purchase, this area will probably become Twalton's newest resident residential community. Our parents, Dorothea and Merle Pennington, bought the property in nineteen fifty eight, sixty two years ago. My sisters and I inherited this land when my mom died in two thousand twelve. When we decided to sell, we specifically selected Venture because we believe they will develop the property in a way that honors our parents' memory. We have followed Venture's development process very closely. We understand their request to amend the RML zoning district. We believe the amendment would allow a greater variety of small lots, single family housing types. And would commit Venture to assortable, to affordable attached housing. Our family urges the city council to approve this amendment. We believe it will deliver a wider variety of houses with a wider variety of prices than is allowed in the current RML district. Venture has told us that the amendment best reflects what they think home buyers want. While also addressing the housing needs analysis that the city wants to implement. This would benefit both the families who want to live in the, in Twalton and the city. We hope you will approve this request tonight. It allows Venture to continue with its planning and development efforts. It implements the city's housing goals and it will result in a new community. That will delight the people who live there and would honor our parents' memory. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Sure. Okay. That'd be the same thing as Mr. Mitten. What we'll do is we'll consider that a comment in favor of the plant text amendment. Later this evening, which is fine. You did it now, which is fine. But we'll remember to, we'll keep it in our heads that you're in favor of the PTA. Are there any other folks who have? Like to do citizen comment?
Hi, mayor. There's no one at the poll center, but there was a Tom Reyes who said he was going to be a part of that. I'm not sure if he's on this evening. There's a. Person with the telephone only. We're waiting for that one person. Is there a Tom Reyes who would like to speak? Yes, no?
Yes, I'm. Hello? Can I, am I heard?
We can hear you.
Hello, mayor. Okay, thank you. Hello, mayor and council. My name's Tom Ray and my wife and I reside at one nine zero three five Southwest Chesapeake Drive. In Twalton. We've been residents for thirty five years, raised two children. And I have been to countless, countless meetings at Metro. Washington County, the city of Twalton and the city of Wilsonville. It was actually my social life for a while and it was including coffee with the mayor as well. And it was discussing and redisessing Basalt Creek. And I'm thinking at every single meeting, but. I really invariably at every meeting, affordable housing. Has been a huge issue of discussion. And at tonight's work session, in fact, livable housing was mentioned. And you guys ended mayor, you may ended, ended your meeting with housing again. And there's a lot of really good ideas, but basically at every single meeting. My wife and I have owned property in Basalt Creek. We no longer own it. We have no interest in development. There's, there's, we have no monetary interest, if you could say anymore at all. There's none. The only interest that we have is bettering the community and the city we live in. We're not planning on any moving. We one hundred percent support Autumn Sunrise Venture Properties, Lennar Homes in their proposed revision. For to consider. And to me, this whole thing, as many meetings as I've been involved with, this not only meets, it exceeds Oregon's metros. Twalton's vision for new affordable housing. This is to me past time. It's time, it's really past time to move forward to make this vision. If this is not a real word, but to make it happen. It's past time. Anyway, I thank you very much. We have no. We do not live over there. We don't have property over there. It's time to move on with this. And it'll be a, with Lennar, with Autumn Sunrise, with Gordon Root. With Venture, they're going to do a great development. It'll be great for the community and great for the city. And the traffic, no one likes traffic. That will need to be addressed. Everybody likes trees. I love trees. But it's, it's about the people and the people that spoke tonight, I thought were really well said, a lot better than I did. But let's plant a bunch of trees elsewhere and move on. And I thank you very, very much for your time and your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. We'll mark that down as a, another person in favor of the PTA. All right. Any other comments, persistent comments? All right. Seeing none, I'll move on to our consent agenda. Those items on the consent agenda are considered routine. It will be adopted by one motion unless someone on the council would like one of them removed and heard separately later tonight. Consent agenda tonight consists of item number one, consideration of approval of the city work. Session and regular meeting minutes of July twenty seventh, twenty twenty. Item two, consideration of approval of a change in liquor license application for bushwhackers. Item three, consideration of resolution number five, five, one, zero, dash, two, zero. Authorize an award of a preliminary engineering contract. For the Herman Road, Teton Avenue to Twalton Road project to Century West Engineering Corporation. Item four, consideration of resolution number five, five, one, four, dash, two, zero, authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement, IGA. With Washington County for city and special district assistance program. And if I, item number five, consideration of resolution number five, five, one, five, dash, twenty. Authorizing the city manager to execute a deed acquiring riverfront property with Twalton River Greenway. Were any council like any of these items pulled from the consent? All right. I don't see anybody saying yes, so.
Motion to approve consent as read.
Second.
Second.
All right. I have a motion second to approve the consent agenda as read. Counselor Pratt.
Hi.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counselor Brooks.
Hi.
Counselor Kellogg.
Hi.
Counselor Morrison.
Yes.
Counselor President Grimes.
Aye.
And I vote aye also. It's unanimous. Moving on to our next item, special reports, our quarterly financial report.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Don Hudson. I'm the assistant city manager and finance director here with the city. And it's my pleasure to present the fourth quarter fiscal year nineteen twenty quarterly financial report. I'm going to share my screen, show the presentation. And let's see. Is that showing up the? Is that showing up? Okay?
Yes.
Okay. Sometimes it doesn't always show up right. So. The first thing. We're going to go over. See, now I've got to re-click on all the different screens I have here to get things to work. Okay, tonight's agenda, we're going to talk about the fiscal year nineteen twenty budget to actual numbers. I'll go over our quarterly investment report. And then I'll go into some of the COVID impacts, the revenue and expenditure projections that we have, and then talk a little bit about our CARES Act funding that we have received or are receiving. So the first thing I want to talk about though real quick is the annual communication to the governing body. This was two letters that were included in your packet from our auditors. These are annual letters that are required for, from them to the governing body. So there's two different letters, one for the city and one for the development commission. These are governed by and required by generally accepted audit standards. It briefly talks about what they're going to do in the audit and some general audit information. One of the auditor's jobs is to figure out where our numbers came from. We try to convince them that we just make them up. And they go about then proving that we did not, which is good because I think the, the real numbers are better than what we might make up. We are in the process of closing out fiscal year twenty still, so there's some expenditures that have not hit the books. We spend. Most of the month of July and into the early part of August. Paying any remaining invoices for services that were provided prior to June thirtieth. Or product that we have received by June thirtieth. So that's happening, but these are pretty good numbers. There are a few things that have not been put into our financial system yet. One thing I want to talk about a little bit is so the general fund, the building fund, the sewer operating fund and the storm drain operating fund. You'll see there's some big differences in the budget here as well as with the actual expenditures, especially on the expenditure side. We use existing funds to pay or to put towards the. Twalton City Services Building out there at the operation site, as well as we use some existing funds to pay into the PERS employer incentive fund. Those came from reserves and contingencies and other set aside monies, which is why those were added in and are being offset by current revenues up above. One thing that I'll add to talk about a couple of things related to those things I just talked about. First, the other half of that construction cost for that building was a loan that we were taking out. We went out to the market. We received bids by June thirtieth and in July, we closed on that four plus million dollar loan. At an interest rate of one point seven eight percent. We were very happy to get such a quality rate, which will then help us pay back that loan in the future. The second piece is the PERS employer incentive fund. That, I think our timing was really good. So kind of a shout out to Counselor Kellogg for staying on top of me. But to make sure we did that analysis, take advantage of that program. The, because of the state's financial situation in the special session, there is a bill that's being talked about. Pulling back the funding that is there for the remaining part of that program. To be utilized in other places. So any entities that have not taken advantage of it yet. Or have not sent in their money will not be able to apply for that match. So our, our money's safe. It's already been put into the trust. The advantages that we have in the savings that we have garnered from that program are already in, taken care of, and we will not lose that, that funding. The general fund revenue piece right here, it's a ninety eight point seven two percent. You'll see that. Last year, we were at about a hundred and five and a half percent. Typically, we come in a little bit high on our revenues. This you'll see is the impact of the pandemic in the last three months of the court of the fiscal year. If you recall, I, in budget committee time, I talked about. That possibility that I thought we would still be pretty close to our budget. But we are not significantly lower. We did have some items that came in lower, obviously our transient lodging tax. We didn't meet the budget on that. Some of our rentals are, are programs and parks and rec. Our municipal court fines, things like that were down low, but we did have some expenditure or revenues that came in higher, such as our property taxes. So those are, that's kind of why we are still close to that hundred percent of the budget. You'll see we tracked just right along year to year on the expenditure side. In the building fund, we ended the year with about two hundred percent of our budget. In revenues, the big piece of that is obviously there's development going on around the city. It has continued about twenty percent of that money came in in the last quarter. So we still were seeing development happening and our building department is still busy. But there's also some big projects such as the PGE project that came in, obviously, it's a pretty good sized project and. Led to that number looking that way as well. On the road, road utility fee revenue, you'll see that we are at seventy eight and a half percent through the end of nineteen and about ninety seven percent at the end of twenty. And go, putting this together, we found that the vehicle license fee from Washington County that was received in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Had not been transferred from the road operating fund into the road utility fund. So I'll be coming back at a future council meeting. Just to do that transfer, but that's why that amount is lower. Once you throw that into, into that revenue transfer in, those numbers compare pretty well. On the road operating fund side, we are seeing revenue reduction. So the eighty five down to eighty one, a lot of that is the gas tax. Revenue that's down for the, the pandemic as well as the, the both counties vehicle license fees. Those numbers are coming in a little bit lower. We also had grants for that Herman Road project that was talked about earlier that. Were budgeted, but we will not be receiving that reimbursement until this fiscal year because of the timing of the project. And on the expenditure side, those are down in that sixty, seventy percent range due to capital projects that were budgeted and maybe not completed. In the core area parking fund, you'll see that our revenues are about a hundred and twenty percent each year. That is we, our core area parking tax monies that come in, but that does come in the early part of the fiscal year, which is why. Those numbers were high. I don't know what that would have looked like had those amounts been due at the end. We will be billing for those here shortly. And we'll start to see what those numbers look like. We did lower that estimate a little bit. When we did the twenty twenty one budget, anticipating that some of those businesses have closed in the district. And on the expenditure side, it's, it's up a little bit. The utilities were underfunded, under budgeted, and so those looked, they came in a little bit higher. On the water operating side, we talked last time I did the quarterly report about our consumption being significantly down and we adjusted the twenty twenty one budget. For that, but that's why that number is lower than budgeted, is based upon the consumption across the, the city that's lower than it, we had budgeted for. The sewer and storm drain operating funds, you'll see that we're a little bit high on the revenues. That is typically related to new accounts, new buildings that have come on board and we start to bill for. And then on the expenditure side in the sewer operating fund, that goes up a little bit because a lot of those. Revenues are passed through to clean water services, which comes out then on the expenditure side. I do want to send out some kudos though to Bert Oheizer and his stormwater crew. They get the consistency award. If you notice that the expenditures in eighteen nineteen and nineteen twenty were the exact same eighty four point six five percent of budget. I'm going to call Bert this week and find out how he does it, but kudos and to him and his staff and I will be sending them a consistency award for that. Next, I want to talk about our, our investment portfolio. Also included in your packet this evening was a one-page dashboard, which has the required information to be presented to the city council on a quarterly basis. In compliance with our investment policy. There's a separate sheet for our total portfolio, which is about seventy six point seven million dollars. And then there are individual sheets for our core investments as well as our bond proceed investments. One of the advantages of using an investment advisor, the change in our investment strategy and the diversification of our portfolio is shown on this graph. As we have diversified and we've extended our maturities, we've been able to attain a higher yield on our investments than we would have if we were just in the state pool. This lower blue line here is the percentage rate we earn on our money that is invested in the state pool. You can see we started out the quarter about one point seven five percent, dropped to one point three, stayed that way through the rest of the quarter. Since the quarter end, we have dropped to one percent on that money. But you'll see that on our core portfolio, we, because we diversified, we're out onto a longer timeframe. We are locked into some interest rates that are higher on those, on those investments. And then on the, in the bond proceeds, because we invest those out, because we have the, the. Expenditures that are happening, we try to match our investment maturities to the, the timing of those expenditures. So that's a little bit of a flatter line, but you can see that we are earning a lot higher interest rate on those investments than they were on the state pool. So our total portfolio is a one point four nine seven percent yield at the end of June. Just as a, a side on what the two-year treasury note, US treasury note, if we were to buy one of those right now, it is at point one, three percent. Our, our investments are out in different instruments, those parts that we are earning higher, but you can see how the interest rates have changed. The federal open market committee, which is a branch of the Federal Reserve Board that determines the direction of monetary policy recently said. The path of the economy will depend significantly on the course of the virus. That's a pretty obvious statement in a lot of ways, but we also can translate that locally as well. Some of the harder areas that are hit in the, in this country are those areas that are rely on things like sales tax, income tax. In one way, we are fortunate that we are more reliant on property tax because of the way that the, this will impact property taxes compared to obviously sales and income taxes. We have year for years, cursed measures five and fifty and the impacts on our property tax system. During the recession back in two thousand eight, nine and ten, we were able to maintain a recent or. Solid revenues in the property tax area because of what's in those measures. Our property taxes for the fiscal year twenty twenty one are still anticipated to stay fairly strong. We are seeing that development that I've talked about. As well as the rates, the assessed values on properties that were set back on January first. We don't anticipate that significant drop in collections. Will, will occur, but we saw in the, the recession before is that number did not drop drastically and we are somewhat conservative in our estimates for property taxes. So we anticipate that those numbers will stay fairly steady. We have been looking at our revenue and expense impacts. If you recall, back when we did the budget. We made some changes to the budget before we adopted it based upon. Impacts that we are estimating through September thirtieth. I feel right now it's prudent for us to extend that look at to December thirty first. Some of those reductions that we made in the budget process are still holding true, I believe. And that some of those will still be impacted. For example, transient lodging taxes. I think we're going to need to look at that, that number. Business licenses, I won't know, we don't bill until December for a, it's a calendar year license. So I don't know what those impacts are going to be until we get to that point. So I don't know where business license revenues are going to come in. But we are looking at all our revenues and all our expenditures. With the library remaining closed and the parks and rec programs are either being canceled or we're doing things differently. We are seeing some revenue losses there, but we are also seeing some significant expenditure savings. Particularly in the temporary staffing areas, which we use temporary staffing to help offset some of the staffing in the library when. We have to fill spots on a temporary basis for when people are out sick and other types of things. And then obviously in the parks and rec and those programs are staffed highly on temporary staffing. So we are seeing savings in there. We are also working on what other savings across the city we will see on the expenditures. I believe at this point, but we start to look at that, that most of those revenue shortfalls that we may experience. Will be offset by expenditure savings as well. So I don't anticipate at this point, a huge hit to the budget. We do have some money set aside. If you recall. We do have some money set aside, if you recall. Here is our pandemic reserve of about half a million dollars that we could help offset some things if we needed to on the short term basis. The last thing I'll talk about this evening is the CARES Act funding through Washington County. So Washington County, their 104 million that they received did allocate $7 million to the cities and special districts assistance. The IGA was passed earlier this evening. We applied for our share of that. We were awarded up to $617,000. For reimbursement for COVID related expenditures through November 15. Staff and I are working on getting the reimbursement documentation together to turn into the county by next Monday. Which is for expenditures through July 31st. But we will continue to work on that up until that every month, then we can apply for that month's. Previous month's expenditures to be reimbursed. The second piece is the utility assistance, the $3 million that was allocated across the county for utility assistance. That program is kicking off this week. We are just waiting. There's a group of clean water services and representatives from the cities working on the marketing plan for that. And we will be targeting our delinquent accounts. We will sending out targeted marketing. In our delinquent bills and so forth to those individuals that talks about what that program looks like. So they could hopefully take advantage of it. It is through community action organization. It is for delinquent bills between March 1st and December 31st. The eligibility is 80% of the area median income. Which just for a four person household is $73,700. Or if you've already qualified for programs such as SNAP, the Oregon Health Plan, supplemental social security, WIC and some other programs. There's an application process that they'll have to go through on community actions website. If people call into us, we could do some pre screening and then point in that direction as well. So more information will be coming out on that. This week, and as soon as I have some of those marketing pieces, counsel, I will send that to you so you can see what that is. But we are excited that something is getting going, moving forward on that this week. At that, I appreciate the time you've had to look at this, look at me, listen to me talk, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, the people's faces start popping in again. All right, sort of see most of them. Right, questions from council? Valerie?
Oh, Don, I see you're going through the next quarter and then it. For the quarter that starts January 1st, will you again look at the budget?
We will continue to monitor the situation and I mean, we're looking at making some estimates based upon things now through December 31st. As things continue, you know, we'll, we'll just continue to monitor it if we need to extend out past January 1st, we will. All I can say is we'll ongoing monitoring of the situation.
All right, thank you.
Bridgette?
I had a, thank you for the clarification on the budget. I'm glad that we're. Holding well as a city and it's nice to see the report and your graphics as usual. I also really appreciated the bubbles with the county information and the information about the utility assistance. And I was curious if people want to reach out to our city for utility assistance, where do they go?
They would, we'll have information on our website about this program. And then they can also contact the utility billing either email at billing@twalton.gov. Or by phone at the utility billing number, which is 503-691-3058.
Okay, so the billing department's handling the help or?
If this goes through community action organization.
Yeah.
We will point people towards that direct.
Okay.
Media action.
Okay, I thought I thought you're somehow I heard you say that you're helping with assessments.
Though that it's just, it's the $3 million that the county has allocated towards that has been allocated to community access or community action. Of which we'll be sending our customers to as well.
That's good to know. Thank you so much.
Other council questions, Paul, Paul then Maria.
Yeah, thank you. Just a quick comment and a question, Don. The first comment is, thank you so much for all you and your staff do. You know, this is a good example of when you look at the issues that our city is not having. It's because 10, 12 years ago, you set down some guidelines and some accounting principles that you've maintained through all these years. To leave us in a position where we can manage something like this. I certainly appreciate it as a finance guy, and I certainly appreciate all the work and want you to know and your staff to know that. That I'm smiling and quite happy with with the work that you've done. The question I have is in round numbers, we have 600,000 in reversal and reimbursable funds regarding COVID. Are there other items and and I guess in a roundabout way, we listen in on, and I know mayor has been in on the Friday calls with the League of Cities. Oregon League of Cities, we get weekly emails from the National League of Cities about all these horror stories and all these expenses that other cities have. That they're not being reimbursed for. And so my question, and sorry for the long winded version. Are there other expenses that are COVID related but are not currently covered? That we need to be lobbying Congresswoman Bonamici, for example, and others with respect to being reimbursed? Because they are funds that that were related but are not covered, if that makes sense.
Yes, I would say that the large majority of the expenditures that we have had are part of this reimbursement from the county. I'm sure as we go through this, we'll find some that may or may not be, but I feel pretty confident that a large percentage of them are covered under this.
So, okay, so just a quick follow up then, because one of the comments that I asked Congressman Bonamici was what we could do. We already know she supports what we're doing and she was very eloquent in that, you know, stories and and what it is that. What those issues are and the stories that not only does she know, but that she can then relay those stories to other Congress representatives across the country. So as you come across those issues that were not getting reimbursed. If you want to feel free to put out, you know, a little blurb to to all of us. So that we can pass those stories along in terms of working with Congress to try to get additional funds for the cities if if it's necessary.
Thank you.
Maria?
Okay, I just, um. Don, I just want to say thank you for, I agree with Councilor Bridget Brooks where you put the bubbles where it's a lot more. Infographic and very helpful for us to understand as far as where the money or how that's being. Allocated, can you give me the name, the phone number again of, so it's it's community action who's handling the support, right? Who's handling the? The, I guess, giving the funds to those who are applying for it. Do they call you? Because you gave us a number that's the city, that's Twallington City. So they call that city, that they call the city or do they are they calling community action?
They will contact community action, the numbers. So once I have that marketing materials, which I anticipate having in the next day or two. I will send out those documents to all of you because I don't have those in front of me. I don't know what that number is right now. Particular number, but I will have that and I'll send that out to you in the next couple of days. And then that will also be out on our website for find it.
Okay, because I, a lot of people have been asking for information on that to me specifically. And I want to put it on my, just where I send that information to the community that, you know. Ask me about how, what is the city doing to help them with bills and and what, you know, other things out there, so.
Okay, as soon as I have it, I will forward it out.
Thank you.
Other questions to council? That's it, Don. All right. All right, so moving on to the next item and just for note. The Washington County Commissioners will be discussing some of these items we're talking about tonight. As far as rental assistance, mortgage assistance and utility reimbursements tomorrow. During their commission meeting, so those folks who want to watch it. They're further refining the dollars and rules and all the basically crossing the Ts and dotting the Is tomorrow. On how the programs are going to work, so it should be pretty interesting to see what the commissioners put together. To, you know, wrap this all up and get it out to the cities like Don saying, they give us the the firm concrete. This is where the program's going to work and this is the process. So that's due tomorrow per Chair Harrington this afternoon. So moving on to item, our public hearing. Yeah, consideration of Plan Text Amendment 20-0003. To modify the medium low density residential or RML. Zone to allow detached, single family residential dwellings as an outright permitted use. Since this is a, this is a quasi judicial item, I have a script that I'm required to read for the Oregon Legislature. So the council will now conduct a public hearing to consider a Plan Text Amendment, PTA 20-0003. Which would modify the medium low density residential RML. Zone to allow detached, single family residential dwellings as an outright permitted use in the Basalt Creek area. I will start by reading the required statement and then we will hear a report from city staff. After that, I will take public testimony. Then council may then ask questions. After the hearing is done, I will close the hearing and council will enter into deliberations. The state legislature, the state legislature requires the following information to be read. ORS 197, 763 sub 5 and sub 6. And ORS 197 dot 796 sub 3B. One, the applicable criteria for this decision in TDC 33 dot 070 sub 5 Plan Amendments. Granting the amendment is in the public interest. The public interest is best protected by granting the amendment at this time. The proposed amendment is in conformity with applicable objectives of the Twallington Community Plan. The following factors are consciously considered. The various characteristics of the areas in the city. The suitability of the areas for particular land uses and improvements in the areas. Trends in land improvement and development, property values. The needs of economic enterprises and the future development of the area needed right away and access for and to particular sites in the area. Natural resources of the city and the protection and conservation of said resources. Protective requirements for the development of natural resources in the city. The public need for a healthful, safe, aesthetic surroundings and conditions. And proof of change in a neighborhood or area or a mistake in the plant text or plan map. For the property under consideration or additional relevant factors to consider. If the amendment involves residential uses, then the appropriate school district or districts must be able to reasonably accommodate additional residential capacity. By means determined by an affected school district. Granting the amendment is consistent with the Applicable State of Oregon Planning Goals and Applicable Oregon Administrative Rules. Including compliance with the Transportation Planning Rule, TPR, OAR 660 dash 012 dash 0060. Granting the amendment is consistent with the Metropolitan Service District's Urban Growth Management Functional Plan. Granting amendment is consistent with level of service F for the PM peak hours and E. For the one half hour before and after the PM peak hour for the Town Center 2040 design type. TDC MAP 9 dash 4. And E slash E for the rest of the 2040 design types in the city's planning area. Granting the amendment is consistent with the objectives and policies regarding potable water, sanitary sewer. And surface water management pursuing pursuant to TDC 12 dash 020. Water management issues are adequately addressed during development or redevelopment anticipated to follow the granting of a plan, a plan amendment. The applicant has entered into a development agreement. The criteria applies only to an amendment specific to property within the urban planning area, UPA. Also known as the planning area boundary, PAB. As defined in both the Urban Growth Management Agreement, UGMA with Clackamas County. And the Urban Planning Area Agreement, UPAA with Washington County. TDC MAP 9 dash 1 illustrates this area. Testimony and evidence must be directed toward the above criteria or those criteria in the Development Code which you believe apply to this decision. If additional documents or evidence is provided in support of the application, any party shall be entitled to a continuance of the hearing. Unless there is a continuance before the conclusion of this initial evidentiary hearing. A participant may request before the hearing is closed. That the record remain open for at least seven days after the hearing. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the council. And the parties an opportunity respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. The failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity. To allow this council to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. The hearing will begin with a presentation of city staff following followed by testimony on behalf of the applicant and supporters of the applicant. Next follows evidence against the application. Rebuttal will then be permitted. After evidence is received, the hearing will be closed and the council will deliberate towards a decision. Any tentative decision will be reduced to a final written decision and adopted by the council, usually at its next meeting. If any council members wish to announce any potential conflict of interest, bias or ex parte contact, they should do so now.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could real briefly. Submit into the record so everybody doesn't have to disclose this as ex parte contacts because it occurred outside of the hearing. Submit into the record the previous testimony earlier this this evening by Scott Mitten, Paul Pennington and Tom Ray. So those are will be submitted officially into the record.
Thank you. I'm checking that off my list now. I don't have to bring that up. All right, okay. Anyone else would like to announce any potential conflict of interest, bias or ex parte contract, contact? I'm seeing no one nodding their head, so I say there's no. So that one's, so starting the hearing, we will now hear from city staff on this PTA. Is this Steve?
Oh, no. Tabitha Boshetti, Assistant Planner with the City of Twallington. Good evening, everyone. I am presenting the staff report for PTA 20 dash 3. Before I jump in, oh, I also want to say that I will also be joined by Planning Commission Chair Bill Beers. Also as part of this staff presentation as well, he'll be. Sharing Twallington Planning Commission's previous recommendation. Also, a few other preambles, I do just want to touch briefly on the scope of this project. Because I know that there's a few potential active cases, various evening meetings, folks very interested in all parts. So really this evening, we are talking about proposed changes to the Twallington Development Code. And if council sees fit from this application to apply those specific changes to the code. So while of course, that code would be applied to a future development application. You know, there's a lot of interest in things like tree removal, transportation impacts that. Aren't quite, quite ripe yet in that sense. Just talking about those code changes. I'm also going to be covering a little bit about what those changes are, how that compares to what our code allows today. You know, what would be changed and then a little bit about our housing needs analysis as well that comes up a lot in the staff report. One last piece of housekeeping before I pull up my PowerPoint presentation. The record was published online last Monday, the 3rd. Since that point, there's been a few additions. There's a brief correction to our findings, got the wrong version. That was published on eight, four. There's also exhibit nine, which contains a memo from the. There's also Exhibit Nine, which contains a memo from the applicant received last Monday with a revision to the proposal. We can get into that. There's also Exhibit Eleven, which contains the applicant's presentation. You'll probably be seeing that tonight, but it's there. And there's also Exhibit Ten, which contains the testimony that at least I have received through staff. I believe some things may have possibly come in directly to council, but we will check that. And there's been a few additional pieces of testimony that have come in today. Those have been emailed to council. It contains various comments. There are about ten public comments that were emailed today, including some folks opposed to elements of future development. A comment from Housing Land Advocates and the Fair Housing Council particularly concerned with the ability of this proposal to meet Goal Ten related to housing on the state level, as well as some folks expressing support. So that is all being added to the record. All right, let's jump into my presentation. Here we are. Okay. So as I was saying, PTA twenty three. There we go. So the scope of this particular code change would apply to a limited area in the Basalt Creek Concept Plan area. So that's south side of Norwood Road, the east side of Boon's Ferry, as you can see in this map here. So while the medium-low-density residential zone is found citywide, the changes that are being proposed would apply to these properties. There's currently about fifty-eight acres of RML zoned in this section. Some of this is currently zoned neighborhood commercial. The proposed changes would still apply there in case of any future proposals shifting that zone. So what's the gist of what's being proposed here? So currently, our medium-low-density residential zone is primarily oriented toward attached housing medium kinds of multifamily housing like garden apartments. A lot of what you call the missing mill is what it allows today. And so the applicant has proposed something that would change the existing code that allows single-family housing only through a conditional use permit or a small lot subdivision to allow that outright. That also includes some changes to lot size as well as lot coverage. The applicant's more recent proposed revision would basically do that same kind of change. Limiting it up to eighty-five percent of the proposed units, so still more single-family. But then there'd be this other fifteen percent as well. Let's see here. So to get into a little bit more detail on that, there's this permitted section that would now be the up to eighty-five percent of a given proposal. Changing of the allowed lot sizes to allow kind of averaging, like you could have some bigger, some smaller, as long as it averages about three thousand, narrower, and some more coverage of those individual lots. So what does RML currently allow? Like, what kinds of things do you actually see? Like, you've experienced RML, but it's not like the houses come and screen at you like what zone they were permitted under. So currently, you would see RML-type developments in places like Victoria Woods. That is an example of a small lot subdivision allowed through the conditional use process. Also across on the north side of Norwood, you also see another small lot subdivision also approved through that condition. You also see attached and more garden apartment-style developments, like the sky across the street from the high school is more of like a condo attached style. I guess you see garden apartments. There's often a lot of green space incorporated with those as well. And you also sometimes see areas that are a mix of things, like actually directly across Norwood from the proposed site. We have some homes that are triplex and duplex on individual lots as well that were built in the early nineties but are also examples of our own zone. Let's see. So our staff report covers a few things. There are elements of the criterion that we found were not met. In particular, a lot of our focus has been on understanding the public interest and in particular aspects of the housing needs analysis in order to get at what is the public interest when it comes to developing housing. The public interest is a huge thing. You know, staff is also working on housing code changes as well. It's a lot to sink your teeth into, and that is partly why we are also deferring to city council in large part on this decision because we know that there are so many things that one can take into account in doing that evaluation. But that said, the housing needs analysis does paint a picture of what Tuolton would need to see to make progress on housing affordability and, you know, being a more inclusive community. That was accepted by council in twenty nineteen, so a lot of you are probably fairly familiar with it. But in particular, there have been estimates of meeting at least, you know, a thousand fourteen units if we're going to keep up with forecasted housing growth. And a lot of emphasis on increasing the mix of attached, single-family, and multifamily from what we've been seeing. In this particular case, the proposal area, while not all of RML citywide, it is fifty-eight acres of the total buildable sixty-nine acres with an RML. And there's really not that much RML outs, like within the incorporated city right now too. So there's like one more acre inside the city. And a lot of our zoning does currently allow for single-family style development. So with that, the Planning Commission did vote to recommend denial. Though there were mixed voices on that planning commission, and I do want to turn it over to Bill Beers. The chair is at hand.
Hi, Tabitha. Can you hear me? Excellent.
I'm just, oh, I need to stop screen sharing. My apologies.
Was, you are able to hear me?
I am able to hear you. I need to stop screen sharing and put myself on mute.
All right. Hello, Mayor Bobinek and fellow council members. A few weeks ago, the Tuolton Planning Staff presented Plan Text Amendment twenty dash zero 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 three to myself and the other planning commissioners. We asked many questions of the staff and applicants representative and ultimately forwarded a recommendation to you that you not approve the Plan Text Amendment, but that was by a vote of four to three. Generally, we're unanimous in our approvals to you. I will also note that the proposal that we recommended, rather that we didn't recommend to you is not the one you're reviewing tonight. Mr. Cooper advised me that it has since been updated. So planning commissioners in favor of the Plan Text Amendment noted that in its favor, maximum housing density would remain unchanged. And the inclusion of single-family detached homes as a permitted use outright would eliminate a burden on the developer to seek a CUP to build those same homes. On the other side, those commissioners not in favor of the Plan Text Amendment cited Tuolton twenty forty's focus on increasing the percentage of attached, single-family, and multifamily housing in Tuolton housing mix, as well as concerns about this change being to so much of the RML zoning in the Basalt Creek area, leaving only like tenish acres left as existing RML. You can find our verbatim comments on pages three ninety-nine to four oh five of your packet. And thank you, and I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
So is that the end of the city's presentation, Tabitha, or?
Sorry, one second here. I'm bringing it back to screen share. But essentially, my next slide is essentially the council action slide. In which we describe that council may follow the planning commission recommendation, discuss further modifications, potentially if there are, is discussion that leads toward approval staff would need to be directed to draft revised findings and an ordinance for a future date. But essentially, we are open to discussion.
Thank you. And maybe I'll ask Aquila or Steve to kind of recap that for the council, if you don't mind.
Certainly, I can, I can start that and Steve can pick up if I left anything out. So essentially, to back up a little bit, when we went through the Basalt Creek planning process and we zoned, we assigned zoning for the residential areas, we matched the zoning to what was already in the city. So that on the north side of what's already in the city is the same zoning as what's in Basalt Creek. And that was very intentional. So just kind of starting with that idea, what can happen in the residential medium-low-density district is either attached, single families, so duplexes, triplexes, that kind of style development. Or right now, what's available in the code is the ability to apply for a conditional use permit and then develop single-family homes that are detached. And that's what you see in Victoria Gardens and the style of development that you see around Tuolton High School. And as Tabitha pointed out, there's also duplexes and triplexes. So what the applicant is asking to do is to allow in the Basalt Creek area the ability to develop single-family detached homes without a conditional use permit. Just have that as a permitted use. And they've also asked to change some of the lot configuration and the maximum lot coverage, so different from what's in the code today. And so that is their request. What Tabitha was explaining about the public interest is, one of the findings that we need to make is why is this change needed at this time? Why is it in the best public interest? And given the housing needs analysis that we did last year, one of the policy directions that came out of that housing needs analysis was to increase the number of attached, single-family homes, so duplexes, triplexes, or townhomes. That process that we all went through, that was a year-long process with a lot of community input and that the council received multiple updates on, that was a policy-setting process. That's the policy that we set. The applicants are from a market perspective. So when this came before us, what we determined as a staff was, okay, we know the policy that's been set. This is what's been allowed in the code right now. If the applicants believe that the policy in the market do not meet, then they have the ability to come forth and make that case. And so that's what this application is. Before I continue on, I, I hope that kind of helped to summarize it. Steve was, do you have anything to, that you'd like to add?
No, I think that pretty well summarizes it. I mean, I think, again, it's a little bit of a conundrum because the applicant by requesting an amendment to the comp plan is, subjects themselves to a fairly high bar where it wouldn't normally be asking them necessarily to shoulder the burden of fixing the issues that are identified in the housing needs analysis, but that is, in essence, what the code in reviewing a Plan Text Amendment more or less does. It says, you know, what is the community's, you know, what is the community's interest? And I think that it's hard for us as staff to point to something else other than the very recent housing needs analysis as an expression of what the community's interest is. And so I think that that, as a close, that is the conundrum here that you'll hear from the applicant in regards to the market and the challenges that are associated with developing. And so again, I think it's also not only developing attached housing, but I think it's also in developing detached housing through the conditional use process as was used successfully before in the examples. And so that's really the crux of the issue before council tonight is balancing those two factors.
All right. So does that conclude the city staff's presentation?
Yes, thank you. Unless there's any technical questions, otherwise we'll just be available as soon as the council has questions following other comments.
Terrific. Thanks. All right. At this time, we then will now hear from the applicant and then following the applicant, those in favor of city council approving the PTA. So is the applicant represented tonight?
That is me. My name is Mimi Dukas. I'm with AKS Engineering, representing the applicants this evening. I'm going to share my screen to get PowerPoint moving here. Let's see if this works. There we go. All right. Mayor, members of council, we appreciate your time this evening. Again, my name is Mimi Dukas. I'm with AKS Engineering. We do have our full team here this evening. We have the applicants, Lenar Northwest and Venture Properties. They're co-applicants this evening. You've heard from one of the property owners, and the other property owner is also present this evening. And we have Mike Robinson from Schwabie Williamson and Wyatt. So what is being proposed? Staff has outlined that, but generally speaking, what we are requesting is a change to the RML zone to permit detached housing as a permitted use. We have tried to narrow the scope, so it really is only affecting the properties represented by the applicants. So there are provisions within the text amendment that limit it to only the Basalt Creek planning area in the RML zone and only for projects that are fifteen acres or larger. That was very much intentional so that we can control the properties affected. It removes the need for the discretionary conditional use permit, but I think one of the more important things that kind of gets lost in the shuffle, the secret sauce to this application is really the lot size averaging. And that's what's going to help the city achieve the diversity of housing that you're really looking for and advance that Tuolton twenty forty goal setting that you've got. We do include setback revisions and lot coverage standards. That is to reflect single-family detached homes and some of the standard development expectations that you have for single-family detached homes. It's important to note, there are no density changes included in this proposal, so from a transportation standpoint, it's completely neutral. After we submitted the application, we did make amendments to it. That is in response to what we heard from Planning Commission and also what we've heard from city staff. We have added some language to the, not actually the purpose statement, but the comprehensive plan list of objectives for what you're trying to achieve in the RML zone to mirror the change that we're requesting. And most importantly, we've added provisions to achieve a minimum of fifteen percent of the proposed homes to be attached homes. So where did we come up with the fifteen percent? That is straight out of your twenty nineteen housing needs analysis. It is the goal that the housing needs analysis has set for what you what you want to achieve for the number of attached homes within Tuolton moving forward. Without this text amendment to the RML Zone, you were already achieving 6% of development being attached. But moving forward, in order to address some affordability, some diversity of housing types, the goal has been set for 15%. So we mirrored that in the text amendment. So it keeps you in line and actually advances beyond what you've already achieved. You're pretty close on multifamily. So in terms of shifting your housing supply, it's really that teeter totter between attached and detached. This is the actual code amendment itself. The red text is what was in the original request and the blue text you will see is what we have amended the application to include based on the planning commission feedback. So we did kind of an inverse language to achieve the 15%. We've said it so that there is a maximum of 85% of the proposed dwelling units will be detached. So you will get a minimum of 15% attached. You could actually achieve more than that, depending on what the market is looking for. So I mentioned the development standards. These are the development standards that would apply for detached homes. You'll note it's still 10 dwelling units per acre. And just for a little belt and suspenders, we've put in this 85% provision in this table as well. So there's no misunderstanding that that is mandatory. So I mentioned that we added some language within the planning district objectives. This is a portion, this is the front end of your Tuolton Development Code that is generally viewed as the comprehensive plan side of your development code. So it's talking about the objectives. We've added in language to make it consistent with what we're proposing. So there's not a conflict there. And then, as staff pointed out, what are the key issues here? The big question that we heard from planning commission and staff is why is this in the public interest? And it's within the criteria for a text amendment. Most importantly, it's consistent with Tuolton 2040. The Housing Needs Analysis is a big part of that. It includes the 15%. The the 12 to 2040 calls out for housing affordability. It also specifically calls out for small lot development. It's looking for a diversity of housing types. Lot size averaging is really, like I said, the secret sauce to achieve that. And I'll show you in just a moment what that looks like. And we've proposed 15% minimum to be attached. The other public interest component is that the current code really doesn't function very well. First and foremost, a density of 10 dwelling units per acre, that's really not functional for apartments. Once upon a time, there were some garden apartments that might be close to that density, but it is very, very low for apartments. It's actually rather low for townhouses. So then you move into the small lot subdivision provisions. And again, I'll show you in a minute why those are really not moving towards the goals of 12 to 2040. And while we're going through this effort, what we would like to do is take away the uncertainty of a high level of discretionary review. Subdivisions are generally straightforward. They're a technical document and we would like to keep it in the technical realm. There have been questions, as Tabitha pointed out, that some other questions have come up that are a bit secondary. Specifically, tree preservation and stormwater. Those will be addressed with the subdivision applications once we actually know what development is going to look like and how it fits on the land itself. So how is the project consistent with 12 to 2040? In front of you is a table straight out of 12 to 2040. It lists out the priorities established in that document. Housing affordability is clearly a key issue. Diversity of housing types is also one. It's not all townhouses. It is diversity of housing types. So what this application is going to do is get you a variety of detached lot sizes and attached homes. So you're going to see a wide variety of multiple types of of housing. And Basalt Creek is specifically mentioned. Again, looking for the diversity of housing, but also that people are expecting lot sizes to be in the 3,000 to 4,000 square foot size. Action items coming out of 2040 specifically talk about trying to remove barriers to residential development, which we heard from Mr. Mitton earlier. You need to open things up. So we've got housing supply. That is directly related to affordability is certainty in the housing market. So that's exactly what we're achieving with this development code amendment. And then one of the action items was to develop a planned unit development ordinance for the exact kind of flexibility that we're talking about. This is a different method to get to the flexibility of a PUD. And we're trying to do the heavy lifting for you. So the other place we need to look for how the public interest is defined is the Basalt Creek Concept Plan. This is the overall plan, but if we want to zoom into the important part, which is Tuolton. You can see the Tuolton portion of Basalt Creek in front of you here. Our site is outlined in green. There's not a lot of specific direction coming out of the Basalt Creek Concept Plan. As Aquila pointed out, it was really trying to use the current tools of Tuolton, applying existing zones to the site and looking at densities themselves at 10 dwelling units per acre. It's a nice middle zone. It's a nice middle density. So it does talk about a mix of residential uses at varying densities and the expectation for RML in this location. But if we go to the findings for the Basalt Creek Concept Plan, you can see that we are still looking for transitional density and character. We're looking for a character that is similar to the RL lands, which are detached homes. Now, if we move forward to this was, this is the code language that was back in the comprehensive plan portion of your development code. It gives a general description. It still recognizes small lot subdivisions. It lists ownership as a priority. And it outlines the 10 dwelling units per acre. If we move forward into the regulatory side of your development code, more of the subdivision side, this is the actual purpose statement to the RML Zone. And you can see that this language specifically calls out for the small lot, small home subdivisions as part of the purpose of the zone. If we move into the language of what a small lot subdivision is under the current code as a conditional use permit, these are the code provisions that are real are are really an obstacle to housing diversity. It lists out that small lots must be no less than 4,500 square feet, which is a good sized lot in today's market. And it calls out dimensional standards that minimum lot width must be at least 50 feet for most lots, 30 feet on a cul-de-sac. So that really hems in what those lot sizes are going to look like moving forward. So if we go to our actual properties that are being proposed this evening, here is an example layout. And again, this is just conceptual. Nothing's been proposed. Nothing's been submitted. But this shows you what the current code lays out using the small lot provisions, the conditionally use permit. All the lots are 50 feet by 90 feet, which is their minimum lot size of 4,500 square feet. It's very monochromatic. There's no diversity. It has a discretionary review. We could actually try and propose this today. I don't know that the market loves this. There's a reason you've got two home builders asking to change what this zone is. So if we look at what we can do under the proposed text amendment that allows lot size averaging and 15% minimum attached homes, you get a layout that looks more like this. Again, this is conceptual. It's not what's being proposed, but we didn't pull this out of thin air. The the road layouts are probably pretty similar to what we'll be moving forward with in the near future. But most importantly, you can see we have five different housing types here, including the attached. The purple is shown as attached. That could be a variety of different places, but you can see that we have four different sizes of single family detached lots for sizes of lots, which also equates to size of homes. So you get a diversity of lot sizes. You get a diversity of home sizes. You get a diversity of attached and detached. So this is clearly in the public interest when you're talking about affordability and diversity. So if we compare them side by side, you can see there's a significant difference between the diversity of housing type that you can get between the two developments. So we're increasing diversity. We're providing 15% attached homes. It's improved compatibility for how we can treat the edge and and transition into neighborhoods. It gives a clear and objective path to for the applicants to move forward. And it can be a test case for how you might want to deal with code amendments moving forward. I think it's important to ask, staff brought up the importance to increase attached housing within the community. It's not clear what the baseline is for increase. Where where is the starting point for increase? Right now, small lot detached homes are possible within the zone. So you can't go with the assumption that the RML Zone is 100% attached homes. It has historically been a mix of whether it's been attached or detached. This amendment provides more diversity from what is that baseline? The baseline is not 100% attached. It's not 100% detached. The 15% component that we've added in gives you a benchmark that assures you that you will achieve at least 15% attached homes. So you're actually, you can view that as moving forward towards the attached homes. And staff also talked about the importance of policy versus market. Again, you have home builders who are in front of you tonight asking for this request. So there is definitely a market component for why this is moving forward and what the market is asking for out in this district. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions. We do have our full team here tonight. And we do request approval.
All right. So going with the flow here, no questions yet. Those who have not already spoken in favor of the application, do we have anybody who would like to speak in favor of the application? That's already spoken already?
Am I there?
All right. Hey, Gordon.
Hi there. Hello, Mayor, Council and all others. I would like to give a little bit of a historical perspective. Many of us have been on this journey for many years. But coming into up to and through the Basalt Creek Planning concept area, we all knew that the existing city code wouldn't do what we needed to do to get the diversity of housing and meet what the market really wants. Now, I'll just say upfront, I was one of the ones not really in favor of incorporating townhomes into the plan. Because if we look at from a market perspective, and if we have a housing preference study that was conducted by the Home Builder Association, Metro, many others. And what it really came to is 7% of the respondents said they would consider likely want to look at a townhome being an attached product. Initially, so that's 7% of the market, but the vast majority wants the detached. But one year later, they surveyed them as well, and 90% of the people living in the attached unit wanted preferred to move to a detached. So you have seven tenths of 1% of the marketplace that really wants to live in an attached product long term. So therefore, we in the building industry have had to get very creative in how to deal with and deliver a product to the marketplace that people want to accept at the same time as accepting the Metro mandated minimum density standards. So I think the real question here is why wouldn't this code text amendment be approved? Because it does, it has always been anticipated that we were going to need some sort of text amendment. And this goes ahead and allows for the diversity of housing that I think people are looking for. And with the most recent change, it incorporates the 15% being the target for attached product. But I will tell you that this type of project with the diversity in it allows for many people from different socioeconomic levels to come together in the same neighborhood. And that attached does not mean more affordable with as creative we've gotten in the building industry. So I too am very supportive of the approval of this in order to allow us to respond to the market demand.
All right. Then Mr. Fromhart.
Got to unmute myself. Mayor and city councillors, thank you for hearing from me. I'm a Tuolton resident. I live at 5885 Southless Sequoia Drive over by the hospital. I too am in favor of this text amendment for the reasons that Gordon just said. I think the city in order to, excuse me, address the need, we need diversity of housing for different for people of different income types and you know, diversity diverse housing types creates diverse housing costs, which more people can afford. So I just think that it's a good looking neighborhood. It could be a good looking neighborhood. Not monochromatic as Mimi said, so thanks for your time.
Thank you. Others who would like to speak in favor of the applicant? I'm going to pop screens here because I can't see. Also raise your hand. I see Levazza.
Hi there. Yeah. My name is Levi Levazza and I'm also representing Autumn Sunrise Property Owner. And I also am a longtime resident of Tuolton. Not currently, I just moved. Unfortunately, because there are not houses available in Tuolton. And so I grew up in the area. I've been involved in this project for a really long time. I went to Horizon, went to Tuolton High School. So I I know all about this area, the traffic that people are worried about, but but really more recently, as a citizen, I've experienced the trouble in finding a house in the city of Tuolton. And I'm one of the 93% that do not prefer to live in an attached home. And I think the diversity that this neighborhood provides really gets at my demographic, which is the younger, looking for a first time house entry level, because there's a diversity of housing type. They they show on their different lot widths at with housing 24 feet. That's almost the same size as a townhome. So with the way that building is nowadays, I think there's just way more room for Tuolton to grow towards their goals with the 2040 plan with this proposed text amendment. I mean, it seems like a no brainer, especially since it's really narrowed down to these specific lots or these specific projects. And just through all this time, we've all, as Gordon was saying, it's always been discussed that there would need to be some sort of change to address this area in terms of the code, just because of the way the small lot subdivision works, I think that this amendment, as Mimi said, it guarantees that you get 15% attached. If you look at Victoria Gardens, there's another subdivision. I don't know where it is, but overall 99, there is zero attached housing in those RML developments. And that could happen here if if there wasn't this amendment. And that would probably be the most economically feasible route to go rather than if this amendment wasn't approved. So I just think it bodes well for the future of Tuolton's housing needs right now, and they are immediate needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor of the application? I'm looking at my attendees list. See if someone has a raise. No raised hands. All right. So then now we'll now hear from those who oppose the application. So go ahead and raise your hand on video, or you can do it via the participant window. Those folks who want to testify against it, and I see Gillian.
Hi. Hi, everybody. Mayor, will you ask me to speak? Or should I say, I see Gillian?
Ah, you had your hand up saying it looks like you want to testify against the PTA.
Well, to be honest with you, I'm not exactly sure about all the technicalities around code, but when I looked at the schematic, the high density right along I the high density right along I-5 made me freak out because I saw a bunch of apartments for poor people living right along the freeway and breathing in all of those fumes. And I really hated that whole look, the aesthetic. And also, I really hate it for people who are already kind of at risk to put them right up against our freeway. Just seems like not the Tualatin kind of thing to do.
Okay, thank you. I think I saw Veronica Williams' hands up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I had two comments. One is that if your stated goal is to increase the percentage citywide of attached housing to 15%, and we're currently at six, simply putting in 15% in this new development barely budges that 6% when you're looking at the city as an entirety. So while I appreciate the line that it's in line with your goal, I actually don't think it is. And secondly, I was thrilled with Gillian's comment because when I looked at that plot, I said, oh, and so we're segregating all of these attached homes out to the outer corners where everybody else will not have to see or look at them, but many of them are along busy streets or backing to the freeway and clearly not desirable homes. So I was particularly disappointed with that also. Thank you.
Others who would like to testify against Mr. Cobb? Stan Cobb?
Hi, thanks. To the mayor, I'll be more gracious this time, Mr. Mayor and the council and everybody listening, thanks. You know, the first presentation at five really led me to believe that the city was having financial difficulties. But the later presentation that started at seven with, I forget his name, your financial guru seemed to suggest he had things in better hands. So that's really encouraging. I wanted to hear that. I'd like to know more about that later. However, regarding this development, I understand that Mr. Pennington would like to turn the property, sell it and develop it in a way that he sees fit. And my parents did something similar years ago, and I sympathize. The problem here I have is with the constituents who currently live here. And I'm going to read what I wrote up. I'll be quick about a current and proposed zoning on this project. Current and proposed zoning on this project fails several of the criteria that you spelled out at the beginning of the meeting, actually. Quality of life and livability are negatively impacted for the people who currently live here. Current residents will be very much negatively impacted by such a high density development, and you are adding no benefit to current area residents. You're doing the opposite. This development at this density is not in the public interest. Your constituents are not the people who want to move here. Okay, your constituents are us. And we don't expect to kill this development. But as your constituents, we have a right to maintain the livability of our community as it stands today. We asked that you reduce the number of units to match the current mix in the city of Tualatin. After all, we moved here from Tualatin as it is, not as someone else thinks it should be. And we also asked that you install that 80-foot setback that I brought up several times in online diatribes and so on. That would match the setback for the church, and it would just be aesthetically a beautiful thing to see. To have this development run right up to Norwood Road with a long line of 20-foot wide attached row houses? God awful. That is just god awful. So yeah, develop a land, cut down all the trees, there's 60,000 of them there as far as I can tell. I mean, really. And it's going to be, I don't know how many 40-ton logging trucks moving down Norwood and it seems like a lot of really big trucks to me, right? I'm hoping they all go south. I mean, excuse me, yeah, I'm hoping they all go south and no paths by all of our churches. But that was the last point. The safety of the roads around this development scared the dickens out of me because we have four schools in the area and impulsive teenage drivers and impulsive children that like to dart out in front of things. And maybe a 40-ton logging truck isn't going to stop for anybody. So please consider that and route all this traffic south. Also, in terms of providing construction access to these sites, this whole thing, please route it all down to Alexon. Not even Norwood, just bring him Green Hill Road and go ahead and handle it with that access. And don't keep it away from the schools and the city for us. Just, we live here. This, I've been in Tualatin for, since 85. I'm an old fart. So come on. Give a little bit of leeway to the people who love Tualatin because we kind of grew up here and we raised our families here, and we don't want to see it change this radically. If I lived on the other end of Tualatin, I might not care, but I live very close to this thing that's going in with a wall of row houses running down Norwood. That is just horrific. And thanks a lot for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you much.
Thanks, Mr. Cobb.
Mr. Mayor, if I could again, sorry. So Mr. Cobb had submitted a comment via the chat function. So because this is during the public hearing, I'll go ahead and just read that chat comment so that it gets into the record as well, and we don't have any other issues with the hearing. So Mr. Cobb said that 4,500 lot size is good in my opinion, and this could be broken up by small green spaces, miniature parks with standing trees. And that's the end of the comment. Thank you.
Thanks.
Great. Others who would like to testify against the PTA? Looking, looking, looking. Ms. Stradden?
Hi, I'm sorry. I'm very new at this, and I wasn't sure if this was the time I'm supposed to give my, all of my opinion. Or if I was just answering your question. Okay, I'm going to go for it. So thank all of you for all of your work. I wouldn't do it for a million bucks, well, maybe a million, but thank you for everything. And you guys really have a balancing act between housing and health. And I don't envy your position. I just want to point out that when I was late to the meeting and this man was talking and he said, I love trees, let's just plant them somewhere else. And this is missing the point entirely. I listened to all of what you guys were all saying, and I thought, well, maybe I don't have the right meeting. Maybe I should attend the subcoding. I mean, the subdivision coding meeting, but I've decided, no, I really should say something. Mimi Duke is Steve Cooper, Akila Heard Ravitch, and then the guy with the beard in the car who's on the planning commission. All of them said, what is in the community's interest? They all asked that question, and none of them ever used the word health in their response. They were only talking about housing needs. And I think that at least one or two of them should have had it in the same breath that we should take a look at the health also of our community. So going back to the beginning, and I'll try to make this brief. This guy said, I don't even live here anymore. I don't have a horse in the race. But we do, and it is in our best interest to stand up for our health and the health of our future citizens and our current citizens. And I live over by the high school. The noise pollution from I-5 is amazing. And the air pollution is horrible along Mandan Drive, and I sort of foresee that happening on this development too. And I would just ask you to pay attention to the health of your citizens and use some kind of science when you all make this decision about how many trees to save and how close to I-5 you should build your subdivision. And I would use the science behind that, like how, how many trees do we need to help the health of the air that our community breathes? And I think that's all I'm going to say because I know we're short of time. I hope I said it at the right time. Thank you for your time.
You did fine. All right. Others who would like to speak against? Mr. Cobb, you have one more comment? You're good?
Oh, thank you so much. I'll be super quick. It's also the kids. I mean, I really love kids. And I can't imagine cramming all these kids into such a high density community like that. They really do need space. And the, yeah, that's so crucial. There's no park nearby. There's no place for these kids to go. If you've got a yard of some size, they can go out in the backyard and play. They can have a garden. They can have a pet, and they can have a great old time. But high density housing, I spent some time in Boston going to school. And I wound up living in a little tiny, almost a row house. The setbacks were terrible, and we had two babies and there was no place for them to play. It was murder. I had to come back to Oregon to get that. Okay? There you go. Thanks.
Great. Okay. Last call for those who want to testify against the PTA?
Mayor, I see that Stephen Hall has his hand up in the
All right. Mr. Hall?
Hey there. Yeah, I'm not actually sure. This is comments against, maybe more just questions or comments about what I think councillors ought to think about. I think a couple of different things. One thing is I'll echo the call that when you think about benefits for the citizens in the town, you know, we certainly, in addition to thinking about housing and maybe housing affordability, I think we should certainly should take into consideration a health, and I would also say environmental issues, green space issues. One thing I think, you know, almost everyone who lives in Tualatin is concerned about and worries about is as the inevitable development occurs, we seem to lose our green space. And it seems like this is the point where we can ask development to plan for more green space, more trees that get baked into the development. So for example, I would be, I would be in favor of a trade off, like, you know, we'll allow some greater density, so it's the same number of houses, but that is balanced by preserving some space for trees, parks, green space, and so forth. And I know the plan has some new parks in it, which is, which is great. So folks, one of the issues that people have brought up is affordability. And so to me, that raises a really important issue that I just don't know anything about, which is, you seem to sort of, I mean, there've been comments from the applicant in support of the notion that this application would support affordability by being able to build houses people want to buy. And I think there's this implicit claim that the diversity of housing sizes, basically, I think someone made the claim, basically, the smaller the house lot, the smaller the house, the cheaper the house, right? And so that's going to be more affordable. Which seems sensible on the face of it, but I just wonder, I just, I mean, I don't know. And so maybe there should be some market research that should get brought and put into the evidence for the application so that you can tell as city councillors, is it true that small, these single family detached small lots, you know, are going to be cheaper on whole or provide greater affordability than, say, duplexes or quadrexes or townhouses or apartments or what have you? That seems like that's an important question, which doesn't seem to be. I looked through the, you know, the documents in support of the application, like, I just couldn't see any information about that. And then the last piece is that some people have argued in favor of this proposal by saying we need to increase the supply of housing in Tualatin, which I think we do. I agree with that notion. I just want to point out that this application doesn't change by their own admission, right? It doesn't change the number of houses that are going to be built. It just changes sort of what different sizes they can be. I think it basically shifts them from being townhomes and duplexes into these smaller lot sized detached homes. Which is fine, but just, I want to point that out that, that you shouldn't use as one of your criteria to support this application saying that it's going to increase the supply of houses in Tualatin more than it already is. I mean, I assume it's a done deal that these houses are going into this space. It's just a question of whether they look like. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Anyone have their hand up in the participants? All right. So at this point, we give the applicant the opportunity to rebut. Oh, wait, one more, one second. Mr. Cobb?
Yes, I'll really be quick with this too. When you've got multifamily units like this in a lot of neighborhoods, you wind up having to have it managed by homeowners associations because people who move into multifamily units are usually younger couples. And especially those row houses, those tightly packed houses, the turnover and ownership there is higher. Because they're coming in as young couples, and suddenly they go, oh my gosh, I have two or three kids, or I have one or two kids, I need my room, so they move on. I've seen that over and over again. And, and the maintenance and the dedication to that house, that unit is nowhere near what you're going to find. I hate to sound so possibly bigoted. It's not what you're going to see in a single family residence generally. I know this from experience, trust me. So you're going to wind up having to pay homeowners associations to maintain these properties, which will drive up their cost for new buyers coming in anyway. That's something to pay some attention to. The cost of ownership in this case is just not buying the home. That monthly payment is going to be tacked on with $200 or $300 perhaps, especially if you're maintaining park areas. Who's going to maintain that, right? So keep an eye on that. The cost of ownership, the cost of getting into those properties may be much higher than we might be thinking. Thanks. That's all.
Now's the opportunity for the applicant to rebut some of the comments of folks who are opposed to the application.
Thank you. Again, Mimi Duke is on the applicant team. As we talked about at the beginning, this is starting to blur into conversations about what the development itself is going to look like. That's not actually what's before you tonight. We're talking about the type of housing and what the code is going to permit in terms of types of housing and process. So I understand people are concerned about trees and traffic and what urbanization is going to look like, but that's not entirely what's in front of you tonight. So this application does in fact advance the 2040 policies. It adds diversity of housing. You saw it in the, in the drawing. It improves the availability of housing because if this does not move forward, there's a good possibility that the housing supply is going to remain constrained. And that that will absolutely affect affordability within Tualatin. And it is achieving attainability, as Gordon likes to say, as opposed to affordability, the ability to get into the marketplace and participate in homeownership. I do want to point out and remind everybody, the drawings that we showed really are conceptual. Nothing has been submitted, but they do show a general development character, and most importantly, they do show the type of diversity housing that the applicants want to move forward. That is the kind of mix that they would like to move forward with, with this text amendment. And unfortunately, if it doesn't move forward, you're looking at something more monochromatic, like the 4,500 square foot lots across the whole site. That layout does not advance the 2040 policies. It does not achieve the diversity. It does not achieve affordability. The question did come up about what, how do you know that smaller lots are affordable? And that's simple metrics. If, number one, your housing needs analysis has already defined what it wants to achieve and how to get there. Attached housing is how they have defined the path to affordability. But they also, within the housing needs analysis, said small lot subdivisions are a way to achieve affordability. There's less land cost involved in the house. And so that is simply more house on less lot is going to be more affordable. It's, it's simple mathematics. So that's what's before you tonight. This application moves towards what you're trying to achieve, what the council has said is important within 2040. And we request approval. I'm happy to answer any other questions council may have.
With that, now we go ahead and open up the floor to questions from council to staff, the applicant. And I guess also those who are opposed. So floor is open to ask questions of the staff and applicant. I got Councilor Brooks first, and then Councilor Kellogg.
Um. I have a lot going through my head right now. I'm going to ask one question, and I have some other things that I might touch back on again, but currently, how the code is written, there is a way to go through a process to do single family homes. a way to go through a process to do single family homes. Is that correct?
Is the question for staff or for?
For staff.
Let folks know who you're asking the question of.
I'm sorry, for Aquila or whomever.
Tabitha Bujetti, uh, planning over here. Um, so yes, there is currently the conditional use permit for a small lot subdivision in the RML zone. Um, that goes to the Twalton Planning Commission for hearing.
Okay. So I, I guess my confusion around all of this is why we need to change the code for and, and you know, forgive me, I feel also as though the conversation has shifted slightly since we were preparing for this meeting with the additional amendments put forth by the applicant. And so, um, it's adding to a little bit of confusion on my part as far as the parameters of what has changed and, um.
So I, I think I might seek to clarify that, or at least try to, if that's okay.
Thank you.
So I think the applicant essentially has two parts to their request. One is to remove the conditional use permit. Um, removing a discretionary review from what's there to allow, um, for the subdivision of the land and then just building of single family homes instead of additional conditions being placed on that development. And then the second part is basically, uh, a request to reduce some of the development standards that apply. And so to allow for, um, increased lot coverage and some smaller setbacks than are currently allowed. And so there are two pieces to it really. And then the third is, is, is essentially a commitment to setting aside a maximum of 15% or I guess a max, a minimum of 15% of however many lots they're proposing to develop. Um, being 15%, which is I think it'd be mirroring the housing needs analysis number. I think where it gets a little bit fuzzy on that is that the housing needs analysis spoke to 15% being 15% of the overall 1,014 units being produced. And so that's 152 units. And so I think, I mean, and I hear the applicant that the layout was conceptual, but considering that this is much of the city's buildable land, um, it's a little, I think maybe it challenges. It's hard to see how you get there, I guess. And maybe that's, maybe that's the confusion.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that. That's my concern. And it was brought up was, um, meeting those, those numbers. And I just want to say, especially for so many people that have tuned in, I appreciate everyone's, um, consideration and concern about our community. Um, obviously we're all here because we're invested in the community and we share that together. Um, the work that we've been looking at doing, I mean, this whole expansion of the, of the urban growth boundary in a lot of ways is beyond the city of Twalton's control. It's been a long process, as many people on this meeting understand. And, um, and we haven't really even touched on the state mandates that are coming down as well. Um, and how we're in compliance. So that's part of what goes into our code when we're thinking about it. My concern is if we don't meet numbers of attached housing and, and the diversity of housing that we need, that what'll happen is there'll be multi-units going in throughout our neighborhoods. With less, as much as, um, Ms. Dukis discussed not liking conformity, there could be a lot of undesirable diversity throughout the neighborhoods, um, instead of doing well planned things. And my other thing that I'm curious what people think about, especially, and I know the conversation around trees is sort of beyond this, but in a certain way, um, when you have a, a footprint of attached houses, it's a different footprint than, um, single family lots. So, um, so there could be different ways. I mean, it's part of the conversation around attached houses is also creating use of acreage in a different way as well. And thinking about those things is what part of the conversation that people have during the 2040 process and during um, what we're thinking about. So I just want to put out there that we have these metrics that come from, um, metro that come from the state that we try to be in compliance with. It's part of the reason that I see that we have a code. And, um, and when we talk about marketability, which I very much understand in values, when we say something's more marketable, then it, it will cost more because there's a higher desire. So there's a piece around the missing middle that, you know, um, I think it's important to discuss. So I guess I have just confusion around if, if there was, if we stayed with the code and we, and somebody wanted to develop, you or whomever wanted to develop over there and have some single family houses and go through the planning commission. Um, and then our, our code can also stay in a way where we meet the metrics that we're being asked to meet as a city for mixed use housing. Then we don't end up in a situation, this is my fear, is we end up in a situation where we're redeveloping existing neighborhoods without the, um, infrastructure to support multi-families within neighborhoods. So those are some of the concerns that no one had talked about tonight that I'm thinking about and anyone is welcome to address my comments and concerns.
At this point, we're at just straight questions. Uh, not comments, not deliberations. This is just questions, Q and A, straight Q and A of staff and the applicant and those in opposition, so.
Well, those are my things that I'm wondering about and anyone can answer. I'm not trying to put a position out there. That's just, those are, that's what's going through my head.
Like to answer the question.
Gonna make a couple of comments, mayor.
Uh, not yet. So who would you like the question to be directed to? Council Brooks.
I'm open to hearing from, um, Mr. Root.
Okay. Go ahead, Gordon.
Okay, thank you. Um, first and foremost, the density standards that are imposed by the city and by metro or the state are all being met by this plan. The density is not changing. So if we are in there 10 units an acre, we're staying at 10 units an acre, whether it be attached or detached. Alls we're trying to do with this code text amendment is allow for the variety of housing, which is be able to provide some, uh, detached housing within this zoning. We always knew it was going to occur. It still meets it. As far as, you know, a lot of people perceive that you have to have an attached product to have an affordable product. That is incorrect. We, as an industry have evolved and it really, the detached versus attached housing costs are not that disparate. And when you see that people want to live within a detached, single family home, all of us are, you know, many of us are in our homes looking out windows and that's what people want to do is be able to look at windows. And so from a density standpoint, Council Brooks, we're there. I mean, it, it's the same density, no matter whether we have this code text amendment or not. It's still at 10 units an acre. So that is able to be met. As far as affordability, yes, we're able to do that in a variety of ways. And it's when you're talking about the footprint of attached versus detached, we have zero, uh, lot lines in essence on an attached product. Whereas here you've got 10 foot between houses. You have more green space. You've got more breathability. You have more room for other landscaping.
And then what my other question would be, Mr. Root, um, why we have, why change the code instead of just applying for the process that's in place?
Well, we want to be able to have the flexibility that the change of to outright incorporate uh, detached housing within this zone. And this has always been anticipated all the way through the Vesal Creek Concept Plan and be, before that is that there was, we knew there was gonna have to be some sort of code text amendment to be able to allow for, uh, the type of housing variety that the metro, uh, minimum density standards mandated.
Was there also though, Council Brooks, was there also in your question, it sounded like you were perhaps concerned about other state and metro standards because there are several that we touch upon. So I, I do want to make sure that that's addressed because there are some that we do not, we're not able to find in the findings that we, you know.
Yes, I mean, the housing types and I don't have all of it, um, you know, memorized, I would say, but if you.
I have like, I have some fast figures, like if that's that kind of thing you're looking for.
Thank you.
Um, so like, uh, there's been a few things said about what the housing needs analysis does or does not say. Um, so, I mean, of course, you know, this is a projection based on what is anticipated for demand. You know, none of this is perfect. Um, but in general, um, of that projected 1,014 units, uh, the housing needs analysis stipulated that of those new units, only 40% they would project should be single family detached, including manufactured housing. That 15% would be single family attached, not 45% would be multi-family. Now totally, do we expect like one development to do like everything that the city needs ever? Um, you know, I agree that that's, you know, not necessarily what's being asked here. Um, but given that council is being asked to actively change the code, um, if you're looking for essentially the question of, you know, does this number match this other number that we're being asked to do? Um, that's what we're potentially, what we haven't necessarily seen demonstrated up to this point. Um, there are some other requirements, um, such as like metro requires that a certain amount of land be set aside potentially to be available for attached housing. Um, and like technically, since this code would still allow both housing types, um, you have no able to find that requirements such as that could still be met. Though of course, there's still the question of, you know, you can meet something by the letter of the law, but also like do you wanna also see those developed? And of course, I think it's also been covered that, you know, um, the applicant could very well apply for a small lot subdivision. Um, you know, we've certainly seen those applications be successful with minimal fuss. Um, and I think the question comes back to, you know, is this worth actively, um, changing the city code in this particular manner at this particular time? If that helps a little bit.
Thank you very much.
Right. So just, we got Ms. Dukas next, and then after that will be Councilor Kellogg for a question, and then after that, uh, Council Reyes. So.
Um, so I, I feel like the conversation is headed towards a direction where the 15% um, attached housing moving forward all rests on this piece of property. And you also have two other zones that your housing needs analysis says, um, within the medium, high density and high density zones, which also allow attached housing, you have capacity for another 300 lots in those two zones. This site itself does not have to satisfy the 15% for the entire city housing supply. It is, it is part of the equation. It's part of the conversation. And yes, we could propose to do all detached homes and not move you towards the 15% at all using the conditional use permit. That's gonna result in a subdivision with no diversity whatsoever. All the lots will be 4,500 square feet. That is not the, that is not moving you towards Twalton 2040. The current code does not give you any lot size flexibility. We can't do anything smaller than 4,500 square feet. So you will end up with a very, very monochromatic, single sized, single marketplace, uh, subdivision. That's what the market is going to lean towards. This site cannot be 100% attached homes. The market will not bear that many townhomes. There's just, that's a, that's an irrational market. And that's exactly where the home, where the, where the developers are coming from. So they have a choice of moving forward with this text amendment that allows diversity and meets the city with the 15% attached component. Or they're gonna have to move forward trying to do a 4,500 monochromatic, single market uh, design. And that's not what they want. It's not what 2040 calls for. And it, it, it doesn't advance the city for what you're trying to achieve. Thank you.
So Councilor Kellogg and then Councilor Reyes.
Great. Thank you, mayor. A couple of questions for staff first. Uh, the presentation says that our current uh, amount of single family attached housing is 6%, but the applicant and also I think maybe the Eco Northwest studies say that's 9%. Can you clarify which one it is?
Um, I, I believe our housing needs analysis says that it's 6%. Maybe Tabitha's looking at, looking that up right now.
Okay. Well, we'll let her do that while I ask the next question. So does, at least in the parlance of the housing needs analysis, does single family attached equate to more affordable than single family detached? Was that assumption made in the housing needs analysis?
Yes.
And why was that?
And I think through the, through the policy statements, it was, uh, I mean, I think that the, I think that's the assumption that went into the housing needs analysis. I don't know if there is specifically support for it, but there are certainly um, things that allude to that throughout, peppered throughout the housing deeds analysis.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that's, I think the applicant is correct. The code is very challenging to develop either housing type. I think that, um, it's, it's very, very hard. And I think that it's hard to, it is hard to make it seem like they're meeting the burden of developing the, the identified need for attached housing. I think the other way to look at it is, is that the, um, bar for a text amendment is also very hard. Um, when you have, you know, parts of the code that have objectives that, um, speak to, speak to in the, um, RML zone, encourage development of attached housing. And I think that while this proposal does does a good job of not standing in the way of, of building attached housing, I don't know that it necessarily encourages it either. I mean, I think that's the market question. Is if the applicant is saying that because they could under the current zoning, build none, is a proposal that commits to building some better than the existing zoning?
Okay. And, and just for anybody on staff, what explains the rigidity in our conditional use permit that requires a 4,500 square foot lot?
I think we, we searched for that one in earnest, but I could, I can't say that we found any legislative history on that. Um, and so I think that, I mean, given the overall context of the zone, I think there's some sense that maybe that it was intended to make development of attached housing a little bit, detached housing a little harder.
Okay.
As a way to encourage attached housing, but there's nothing other than some of the comp plan statements that suggest that the zone is supposed to be for primarily for attached housing or for the encourage, in, to encourage development of, of attached housing.
And this is, I would just add the, the piece in the, the comp plan. So chapter five uh, has it written that it's the RML district's supposed to be for, uh, attached housing and the only method for detached housing in that comp plan is through a conditional use permit.
So again, I, I think we can't surmise the exact reasoning, but it, it lends itself to some conclusion that that was the intent.
Okay. Um, my next question, and mayor, can I ask a second one of similar nature to the applicant? Okay, my next question, and Mayor, can I ask a second one of similar nature to the applicant? Okay, Ms. Dukas and, and Mr. Root, um, I noted in your land use application, um, there's the following quote on page two. Small lot detached homes can reach the same price range as attached homes and are in greater demand by the market. Uh, I have no doubt that they are in greater demand by the market, but what evidence do you have to justify, um, that single fa- or small lot detached homes can reach the same price range as small or single family attached?
That is based on experience by the two developers applicants that are before you tonight. Um, I think they can point to examples throughout the region. Um, I, there's plenty out in South Hillsboro. Um, there's some in, um, uh, the River Terrace Planning Area, um, where you can reach the same price point with a small lot detached that you do with an attached. To work at experience.
Okay, and, and you are also mentioned in your comments, um, that this development with the planned text amendment would provide for diversity in housing. Uh, I understand there's diversity in the lot sizes, but how will that affect the square footage of the units? Will there be diversity, wide diversity in the square footage of the units?
Yes, there will. Um, that, that's, that's directly related to, um, the diversity of lot sizes. So, um, home sizes are, um, somewhat related to lot sizes. Um, there's some limitations there, but, uh, once you get to very large lots, that's where you start having three car garages. You can really, you've got room to work and, and add in the, the home square footage with the smaller lots. You get more efficient in how you put that house in. You're still putting a lot of house on, on the lot, but, um, that's where you're getting the diversity. The, the, the house is reflective of the lot size. Typically, there's exceptions to it. There's, there's single lot, uh, single level living, and that's got a completely different metric to it. Um, every builder strives to have some single level living homes. Um, so there's some, some outliers, but generally speaking, bigger lots have bigger homes, smaller lots have smaller homes. But there's, there's a diminishing line to it. Those small lots, we're putting a lot of house on a small lot, but it is, it is a smaller house.
Okay, and so when you consider in the mockup, and I understand it's not a submitted development plan, but those rows of purple, uh, 20-foot frontage, right? And then it looks, I'm guessing, 50 feet lot length?
And those are just examples of, of a typical duplex width. The, the home itself is 20 feet wide, so it's going to have a five-foot side yard setback on one side. Um, I think everybody's expecting like a duplex type of home. Um, it, we call it a, it's a two-unit townhouse, so one wall attached for each of the units. Um, so if those homes are 20 feet wide, you put them on a 25-foot wa- wide lot, you end up with, um, two lots that are 50 feet wide and a house that looks like a single family traditional two-wallletting house. So from a scale standpoint, it works really well. Um, it also is a good edge treatment. Uh, neighbors had concerns about that it's around the edge, but that is a good edge treatment. It's along the roadway, there's some noise buffering involved. Um, those homes often put a premium on the square footage of the home as opposed to the, to the yard space. Um, so, you know, those are, those are theoretical layouts, but, um, yeah, the, the, the townhouses are anticipated to probably be twos, maybe some threes, the, the product is 20 feet wide and then a five-foot side. Um, Lennar actually wants to do a larger, um, house, uh, for the attached homes. So that's, that's probably the tightest that they could possibly be. Um, but yeah.
Okay, and, and so looking at, let's just take one of those chunks of purple, is that considered a single lot or are those all each individual lots?
Those are individual lots, they're for sale, fee simple, townhomes.
Okay, so with a 55% coverage ratio, say it's a thousand square foot lot, then it's 550 feet on the first floor. And there's obviously got to be a second floor, maybe even a third floor, right?
And that's part of why we're trying to, uh, change the lot coverage standard. Um, that's part of our request is to allow more lot on the small lot. And that's, that's where the affordability comes in. When you're buying less land for the dwelling unit, that's where affordability comes in. So, um, that's why we're asking for the higher lot coverage.
But I think that's the example I used, we're at 45 in the current code and you're proposing 55.
Uh, we're proposing more than what?
Attached is 90.
Attached is actually 90. Detached is 45.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I didn't see that anywhere in the, uh.
The townhouse are existing, so we didn't have to modify that code, that's existing code.
Okay, all right, well, I will quit monopolizing the conversation, let somebody else come in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just so that, um, your first part isn't lost, um, I was finding 6% on a few pages, but at any rate, um, the percent of the new housing is the same.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Reyes.
Um, yeah, when I first, um, started reading the, the, the resolution and changing the zone, I thought for some reason that the entire area was going to be zoned for, um, high density. But then, um, it's just one section, it looks like. And then the other, is it one section of the entire Basalt Creek, Basalt, um, area? And then the other section, is that what I'm understanding? I think I want to be clear on that because for some reason I thought the entire area was going to be, or maybe it is that way, um, it's going to be, um, zoned for high density and then, so I guess I, I'm, I need clarification from the city. The whole area there, it's all high density? Or is it, uh, one section? Because I thought I heard somebody say, this is what we're talking about in this, in the, in the map. They, they showed a map and they said, this is a section that we're talking about. And I think they said something about purple or. Sorry, I want to get clear, I want to clear, I want to see the, I guess I want to be able to identify which area is going to be built um, with the zoning that you're talking about. Because I thought for some reason, um, the whole thing was, um, high density. And then you're proposing to be medium density, right?
So if, if I might jump in a second, um, Tabitha, could you just go to the one slide that shows the map? And we'll bring that up for just a second and I'll kind of talk through that and then, um, explain what, which part of Basalt Creek this is affecting? Are you able to do that? Oh, that's cool. Um.
Um, the area of the application, I do not have the entirety of the Basalt Creek.
That, that's okay, that's okay.
Would you like me to share mine? I mean, um.
I can also pull up my chat.
Um, so the, the portion that we're talking about and it, it looks like you're, there you go. Um, so Counselor Reyes, um, we're, we're not talking about the enti- entirety of Basalt Creek. We're just talking about, um, this portion that surrounds Horizon High School. And there is still, to your point, there is still a portion that is zoned high density residential that is not part of this application.
Okay. So is. Yes, I, I need a clarification on that. Yeah, very helpful, thank you, Quill, I was.
Okay, all right, can you stop sharing, Tabitha? Thank you so much for doing that.
No, thank you. Um, yeah, because it makes, it changes a little bit on what I was thinking. Because I, for some reason, I thought the entire part, the whole Basalt Creek was, was that. And then it's just a section by Horizon High School, which, um, I guess, um, that's, that's what I needed to see again and, and just process that. So thank you.
Counselor Morrison.
Yeah, thank you very much. I've, I've three questions. One is, uh, specific to Gordon Root, one is too specific to Steve, and then one is just to whoever happens to know the answer. I'm going to start with you, Mr. Root. Um, I'm, I'm curious, uh, when you first conceptualized doing something in what has now become known as Basalt Creek? And if you can think back, and I, I know the year the Governor Kowalski originally signed the executive order creating the, this opportunity, when, what year? And don't even give me the month, because I know it was so many years ago. What year do you recall?
Uh, 2004.
Thank you, okay, 2004. And then, does anybody, um, and Quill, this is probably, you're the, probably the, the expert on this. How many units, once HB 2001 is fully implemented for cities over 25,000, which includes 12, how many units per acre will a builder be allowed to build?
That's it, excellent question. I don't, I don't know exactly what that acreage or what that density will be. I think you're asking a density or dwelling unit per acre question.
Correct.
Yeah, and what House Bill 2001 is requiring us to do is to allow for, um, other types of units besides single family homes to be built on, uh, in areas that allow for a single family residential.
Correct.
Um, so if there is a house right now, we, we are able to put some parameters around that. And that's, that is what we're going to explore further as we get into development code updates. Um, later this year, maybe early 2021. Um, but just for example, if there's a house with a single family home on it and there's enough land based on the code and rulemaking, they could put another house on there or, um, add a, uh, turn it into a duplex. So that's, um, very high level. We have a lot of work to do to actually implement House Bill 2001.
But in terms of density, it could be, we could have a density problem, correct?
I'm not sure I would characterize it that way. I, I don't, I don't know that answer.
That's fine. All right, and then finally, uh, to, to Steve, um, uh, you had commented that it was, um, the current planned tax amendment is challenging and hard, and the, I don't remember the exact order of your words, but you used both challenging, you used both hard. So my question is, would this planned tax amendment, Steve, make it easier for the developer to develop?
I think the answer from their perspective is yes. I think what I was speaking to is the challenge is that the way in which the city's own code sets the bar for changing the code is challenging.
Okay, and, and thank you for clarifying that. And so then, okay, so with respect to a conditional use permit, which I believe is also what you're talking about in terms of being hard and challenging, this obviously then simplifies that process, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Other questions? I got Counselor Pratt and then Council President Grimes.
My question's for staff, and I'm looking at this Basalt Creek Concept Plan and, um, of the area left for residential, like on the other side of Boons Ferry, the majority of that is low density residential. And so I guess I want that defined. And then when I'm looking at the area we're talking about in front of Horizon for high density residential, it looks like a very small portion of this total. And, um, it, maybe I'm interpreting this wrong, but it looks like this area we're talking about takes up the majority of the medium low density residential that's available here for development. So is that correct? And, um, I guess start with low density residential.
Right, so the low density residential on the west side of Basalt Creek, um, Concept Plan area, I think what you're asking is what does that mean? Like what, what could be built in low density residential? And that is single family homes. Right now, our code, um, requires about a 6,500-foot square foot lot size. It gets kind of averaged out, some of them can be a little bit smaller, but the code is specifically saying that there needs to be an average of 6,500 square feet in a subdivision. So it, that subdivision will look very similar to what you see a, along Hellenius, along, um. So the second part of your question is this amendment tonight, um, focusing on the residential medium low density around Horizon. Your interpretation is correct, that is the majority of the RML in Basalt Creek. There is still some, um, on, you know, on that, uh, near Grams Ferry, next to Grams Ferry.
Okay, then I guess my question now is to me, me, because, um, at one point you said something about, um, other areas to develop 300 units and I'm kind of confused as to where that would be in our given land inventory.
Maybe you're there. She might ran off to the restroom, who knows? We could go for a while.
Okay, I maybe I'm just missing it, but I'm not seeing where, um, where land is available.
Ran to the restroom.
Right. We'll, we'll come back when she's back.
I'm here, I'm here, sorry, I wasn't in the restroom, I had to get a power cable. All right, what, what can I do for you?
So what I was, I'm looking at this Basalt Creek development area and I'm, um, I, earlier you mentioned something about room for, um, 300 units outside of this, um, property we're speaking of currently. And I'm just wondering where this would be located, because I'm not, I'm not.
It's, it's throughout the city. It's for the Housing Needs, um, the Housing Needs Analysis looked at, uh, capacity across the whole city. So that is, um, from Exhibit Four, the Housing Needs Analysis. Um, and so that's going to include land across the whole city in the medium, high density and high density zones.
Okay, so every other space would have to be used for these?
No, you have vacant existing land that hasn't developed in other parts of the city. So that are zoned medium, high density and high density. So that's, that's where that capacity would come from.
Okay, thank you.
This, it, it doesn't really come from, it already exists.
Counsel President Grimes.
Thank you. Um, first I want to make a clarification on something. The PowerPoint presentation tonight on page four where it says proposal, and it talks about existing code on the first shaded box. And it says that a conditional use permit currently is required for a small lot subdivision. But shouldn't it also say retirement housing? And then on the proposed changes, wouldn't we be waiving a conditional use permit for small lot subdivisions or single family dwellings, but leaving it in place for the retirement housing facility?
It, it's neutral in regards to the other uses. For manufactured housing, retirement housing, those are all staying exactly the way they are. The only thing that we're changing is the, um, detached lots in the zone, um, becomes a permitted use specific to Basalt Creek for projects that are over 15 acres. So the other uses all stay exactly the same as they currently are. If they're permitted, they stay permitted. If they're conditional uses, they stay conditional uses.
But I thought part of this change, and this is for staff, I thought part of the change that they're asking for is to do away with the conditional use permit.
Just, just in a, just in a specific area. So the slide, the slide omitted anything that wasn't being changed in the interest of making it easier on our eyes. And then the conditional use still stays in place for the majority of the city. It just gets added as a permitted use for this specific geographic area.
Okay, and then in the planning commission, some of the notes from some of the commissioners, one of the comments, um, referred to the conditional use permit as being an added burden for the developer. And that was one of the reasons that they were suggesting that we should make the change to the PTA. And I'd like staff to comment on that, the added burden portion, how that would be the same or different than other developments that have that condition. And then secondary to that, isn't the whole idea though of a conditional use permit in developments like that is to address some of the things that some of the community members have brought up? Like the issue with green space or trees or parking or, um, some traffic impacts? Aren't those things, things that we normally would be able to address through a conditional use permit? So I've got two questions about the added burden and then some of the things that could be addressed through conditional use.
I think, just to answer quickly, going backwards, I think. I think, just to answer quickly, going backwards, I think, yes, the answer is, is that conditions addressing certain impacts from development are what a conditional use, that's the purpose of the tool. So yes, is the answer to the second question. And then the first part is probably two parts. One is, is that there's an additional regulatory burden. They still have to do the subdivision after they do the conditional use permit. So, and then I guess the second element of that, which ties into the notion of modifying the plans to meet community desires, is that there's uncertainty around it. And a normal subdivision is more predictable because it has criteria that are very clearly laid out as far as what the applicant needs to do to meet the standards.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Pratt.
My question's for staff again, and I apologize for my lack of knowledge here, but if the developer applied for a conditional use permit, does the Planning Commission have the right to say you still have to put X amount of the attached housing? And then the rest of your property you can use as, for the conditional use permit you're asking for? Or is it one or the other? Or is it all or none type thing?
That's a good question. I don't think that the two can split each other out. I don't think that it's either all small lot subdivision or all attached units. I suppose that it, that could be one of the conditions. Generally, conditional use permits are used to mitigate effects, mitigate any problems that arise from a use. So it would be more like mitigating anything that kind of came up as a result of the small lot subdivision. I would have to, I would have to investigate that a little bit more.
I think it depends on the application, but generally, yes, that, you know, there are conditions that can be placed on the, the amount of small lot subdivision. If, if the count, if whoever was making the decision didn't want to approve it for the full amount, generally, they can, unless there's a prohibition in the actual code itself or something strange about the application itself, those are types of conditions that would have been applied elsewhere.
All right. Other questions? So counsel has no further, oh, Counselor Reyes.
When are we ready for comments?
What's that?
When are we ready for comments?
We gotta finish Q and A first.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions?
Mayor, I see a hand up by Veronica Williams.
This is questions from council, not from the audience.
There you go.
All right, so that will close our QA part of the hearing. So now I will close the hearing and council will enter into deliberations. So deliberations, chat, opinions. Counselor Reyes.
Yeah, so this is what I've, I've been thinking since this whole conversation started. And I just, some of the things that we have been talking about is multi family homes for different generations. And I know some people think of children, but we're also thinking about seniors that are looking to downsize their homes. So I, I just feel like we, we, we need the multi generational homes. Or we talked about this in, in, in our needs analysis. That's what our community is asking. They're asking for homes that are for, you know, the young upcoming couples to the, those who are, have their children have left their home and they're now in a home that they don't really, they have too much space and they want a smaller home. I, I just, I guess I'm for diversity of homes, but I don't know if, if if what is being proposed is the right thing. So I, I guess I'm, I'm still a little bit confused on that. I really want to do the best for our community and make sure that everyone is, it has the accessibility to a house, whether that's a condo, whether it's a townhome, whatever that is. I, I want us to think that way, because that's the way I'm, I'm thinking. So I don't know if there's any clarification from the city as of, is there like change, I mean, what are we asking? What are, what do we, we, I thought that was what we really want to do, the diversity of homes. And, and that's what we want to build in that community. Hopefully the developer can build in our community something that's for everyone. I mean, definitely, I didn't like how some of the, the map, you know, how some homes were up against the I-5 kind of thing. I mean, there's some modifications that need to be there. But I don't, I guess I, I don't understand why, why are, are we changing the zone? I mean, I, I still don't understand it. I just want, I just want us to to think of the diversity that we have in our community and that we make that decision.
I just want to circle us back that the question tonight is, do we modify, do we approve the PTA that will remove the conditional use requirement process in RML in this area? That's the question we need to focus on, not designs of what's, the land is going to be used, any of that. We got to focus on the PTA itself, the request from the applicant to remove the conditional use permit process from this area. And that's, you know, the trees, as staff said before, we're not at this point worrying about trees and what kind of housing types are going in there. And the diversity and equity and affordability. At this point, it just comes down to, how do you feel about granting the applicant's request to remove the CUP process and changing some of the set-asides and lot statistics, if you will, the lot characteristics? So that's what we are, should focus in on right now. Counselor Pratt.
I'll just weigh in with my opinion. I, I feel that I, I'm not in favor of the plan text amendment. I just don't see why we should make an exception. And I don't feel that I've heard anything that makes me feel that the burden of proving this in any way meets our housing needs analysis has been shown tonight.
Thank you. Counselor Morrison.
Yeah, I just want to make a couple of comments. Number one, several Planning Commission members, including Mitch Green and Alan Outland, both commented on the process of going through this conditional use permit. It's time-consuming. As it was stated earlier in testimony, it's presents a burden of uncertainty to the developer. It adds cost to the developer. Every cost we add to this developer adds to the price of the house. So if this council is committed to affordable housing, this is the kind of regulatory process that allows for a developer the certainty of moving forward and not having to deal with a conditional use permit. As we've heard from staff, a conditional use permit would be required for them to do what they wanted to do. And as I understand from the comments from the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission would probably be approving a conditional use permit to build this development, except it would add a lot of costs and it doesn't make us a very builder-friendly community. And so those are my comments on this. This plant text amendment makes sense. It seems to be very fine-tuned to just this one little development. It would, although allow for, say, down the road when Stafford gets developed, somebody could use this as a, as a guideline to make their building easier. And again, by making their building easier, it makes it more affordable. So those are the comments that I'm making tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Others? Counselor Kellogg.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I am struggling here because on a narrow basis, I think I agree with Counselor Morrison that I'm troubled that the development basically has two choices, to go all-in on housing that they say the market doesn't want. Or alternatively, build a, what they've described as a monochromatic single-family dwelling that's going to do nothing to provide housing that's any less affordable than what exists in Twalton today. And so, again, on a narrow basis, I, I would tend to agree with them. But on a broader basis, I look at what we're trying to do with the Housing Needs Analysis. And this is by far the largest collection of acreage that provides as a single permitted use duplexes, triplexes, cottage houses, et cetera. So if this, if those aren't built in this location, then I don't see anywhere else where they're going to be built. I mean, there's a parcel, you know, just below Victoria Gardens that's, looks seven or eight acres. And who's to say they don't want the same treatment? There is a, you know, high-density multifamily development that, you know, appears to be just a few acres there at the corner. So where does this housing come from in the future? And to address Counselor Brooks' comment, you know, if it's going to be wedged into existing single-family residential neighborhoods, then those are conflicting uses in some sense. And so, you know, as I said, I'm troubled by the broad lack of zoning for housing that is supposed to meet this missing middle. I'm comforted to some degree by what the applicant had to say in terms of affordability. And I would like to see, I think ultimately, more flexibility in our conditional use permit process for this zone that if you did want to make a single-family subdivision, you could have lot size averaging and do different things to get to that price point that we want. So those are, those are my considerations at this point.
Other comments? All right. Counselor Brooks.
Um, I'm leaning toward, well, I just want to say that that what I said before, I have the concerns about why we have these policies in place in the first place. And they're driven by these needs analysis that we really do have. I'm not convinced that detached houses are in the same value as attached houses. And that's, and also just from appraisal work, I know that even yard size doesn't always factor depending on the market on value of a house. So those kinds of comparables I have trouble with in the testimony. I don't necessarily agree with that. And I just want to say that. And I think there's a way through with conditional use permitting to still have some single-family homes. And for our city to be trying to go towards its goals that I'm afraid if we don't do in an organized way is going to be done in a chaotic way that's going to disappoint a lot of people. That's my fear.
Other comments? All right, I guess I'll go. I also like Counselor Kellogg are in a dilemma. I see the arguments from the applicants, but I also understand the whole reason for a CUP process that given this area and as residents mentioned, you know, our constituents are our residents and the residents around this. And that the CUP will factor in addressing some of those concerns in my mind. Yes, it's a little bit, it's a burden to developers. I understand that. And as Counselor Brooks, I think Kellogg and Pratt were alluding to, is perhaps there's a way we can streamline and make it a little easier to see your processes there. So that the developer can get single home, single-family detached homes in this area. But the, to me, the CUP is our leverage, if you will, to get what we need in the city as far as housing needs and get the types of homes we need built in this city. I don't want to go build a bunch of homes or have developers build homes that won't sell. But based on what I saw from the HBA's Missing Middle webinar, missing middle homes are selling like hotcakes. Those developers who are coming up with innovative plans and designs are filling those homes. So I'd like to see some of those terrific designs at HBA put out, maybe incorporated into this design when we get to that point. So as other counselors are mentioning, I am leaning towards denying the PTA. Any other comments? So we need to have either a motion to approve or deny this PTA.
Motion to approve the plan text amendment as submitted, Plan Text Amendment 20-0003.
I have a second. There's no second for that motion. That?
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the PTA 20-003 and direct staff to bring back an ordinance to implement the decision for council consideration. I'll go through the roll. Counselor Reyes.
No.
Then why did you second?
I'm sorry. I, I meant to, I'm confused. That's right. I'm, I'm confused.
All right. Counselor Reyes has voted no.
I take that back. Yeah, can I amend that?
They're weary. It's done.
Sorry.
All right. Counselor Kellogg.
No.
Counselor Pratt.
No.
Counselor Brooks.
No.
Counselor Morrison.
Yes.
Counsel President Grimes. You're muted.
Regretfully, I say no.
And I vote no also, so the motion fails.
Okay. So I'm not trying to say this, but I motion that we instruct staff to deny PT 20-003.
All right.
Second.
I have a motion and a second that council denied Plan Text Amendment, PTA 20-003. I give them all right, 0003, and direct staff to bring back a resolution to implement the decision for council consideration. Counselor Reyes. Counselor Reyes. I'll come back. Counselor Kellogg.
On the motion?
What's that? Go ahead, Nancy.
Can I ask a question on the motion? Is it possible to sort of split this out a little bit? Is there a possibility where we could approve the changes to the PTA for everything other than setting aside the conditional use permit? Where we could go ahead and say lot size, frontage setbacks, the coverage size, amend all of those, but still ask for a conditional use permit to be required? Is there a possibility to do that so that we can see some of the things that we're trying to accomplish as far as lot size and diversity of lot size and home style and everything else there, but still keep a conditional use permit? So some of the counselors feel like we might have a little bit more traction for some of the other areas. a little bit more traction for some of the other areas that we have concerns. Is there a way to do that? Or is that not possible?
I have to throw that over to Mr. Brady, but my assumption is we're approving the application and their requests from the applicant.
We have someone motion.
Yeah, so, so the, it's a little complicated. Yes, there is a way to do it. You would have to make those motions. The motion already was to deny it, so there would have to be an amended motion that was made. And then you'd have to specifically insert and exclude those sections that you want to adopt and those that you want to not adopt in, as presented in the planned text amendment itself.
Okay, but we, we have the motion to deny is still ongoing, so we would have to go through the motion to deny first and then?
No, you'd have to request, you'd have to make a motion to amend the motion made by the first and the second and request and state why you're amending and what you want the amendment to be.
All right, I'll, I'll tackle that one. I would like to make an amendment to the motion that's currently on the floor. And I would like to green light the proposed changes to the PTA with the exception of waiving the conditional use permit requirement.
All right, so do I have a second for the motion to adjust?
I'll, I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to amend the denial per Council President Grimes' request. Go through the roll here, Council Reyes.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Do we have discussion on this?
Sure.
Okay, so I, this is really going to be some complicated sausage making, and I think it would be better if it was done offline between the applicant and staff. They've got our comments on what our concerns are. And if they can, you know, fix up a reworked proposal, I think that would be preferable than to us trying to line item a motion and approving it tonight.
I, I just saw thumbs up from the applicant mayor, so perhaps that might be a good way to go, as Council Kellogg has suggested.
So what does that look like, tabling it to a date certain? Sean?
So there's two ways, actually, there's probably more than two, but two ways. One, the applicant can, can withdraw the application at any point in time up to the date of the decision. And so that's another way, and they could go through this process again to start over. Another way is essentially to continue to not decide, to reopen the hearing, and we'd essentially have to have a new, whole new process, a whole new hearing on whatever the new proposal is. And I don't know where we are on the, on the 120-day rule, but that would be the other piece of it, so.
So as far as we're, I got to solve this parliamentary stuff first. So Sean, with the amendment to the, do we have to vote on these? Or do we stop and the applicant can request something?
So it's, it's up to the council. So if the applicant wants to request something at this point in time, they certainly can. But the, the process on the table right now is the amendment to the original motion. And so that, that would have to be voted on first before any final motion on the original denial would be voted on.
Right. So let's knock out this amended motion, Council Reyes.
I am totally confused of what's going on, to be honest. I don't even want to make a decision because I guess what Nancy said makes sense, and I guess what Kellogg said makes sense too. So I guess, yes, makes sense.
Right. Council Kellogg.
No.
Council Pratt.
No.
Council Brooks.
No.
Council Morrison.
Abstain.
Council President Grimes. I vote no. So based on that count, it sounds like it fails between abstentions and no. So we're going back to the original motion. And at this point, Sean, do we pause here for the applicant? Or we have to vote, or we allow them?
Yeah, so that it's, if the council wants to pause, yeah, if the council wants to pause for the applicant to allow the applicant to either request this be continued or to draw completely, that is certain.
All right.
Would it be appropriate to, to hear from the applicant? Is that appropriate to?
Yes.
All right. Ms. Duke.
We're off mute. Hello, thank you. Thank you very much for the opportunity to jump back in. Yes, we, we have heard some feedback and we're happy to work with staff on some amendments to the application and come back before the council with a amended proposal. So we would like to continue the hearing for the opportunity to do that. We need to do that to a date certain so we can, we can talk with city staff about what that looks like.
All right, thank you. So Sean, what's the next step?
So if it's going to be continued to a date certain, we need to know what that date is.
We need probably a month.
Probably about a month is, do you have something? Does your schedule look good somewhere in that month timeframe?
I'm pulling up our, I think it's probably fairly open. Let me just. So September the 28th is, council has a, a meeting on September 28th.
How does, does this impact, Sean, the 120-day clock? Or is it paused and says ask for continuance?
It's a, it's a complaint amendment. So no 120.
There's no?
It's a quasi-conditional, so I don't, I don't know where we're at on the.
At the very least, the 120th day, be what it may, is October 15th.
Okay. All right, so we don't have that thing hanging over us too. So we've got a date certain for a continuance. And we don't need to vote on that, correct?
We would just set, the council would just set the date to the date certain, whatever the, the announcement of that date is.
All right, so we're doing the motion and a second for that?
That would be best.
All right. Who wants to do that?
Mr. Mayor.
I'll do that.
Okay, go ahead, Nancy.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Well, I'm just making motion to move the hearing to date certain September 28th, Monday, September 28th.
Second.
I have a motion second to continue with the hearing to May, to, what am I doing? September 28th, it's getting late. All right, Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council Kellogg.
Aye.
Council Pratt.
Aye.
Council Brooks.
Aye.
Council Morrison.
Yes.
President Grimes.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. All right. So is that it for this, this item?
So let me just ask, and I'm sorry for a little more sausage making, does that, does it need to be re-noticed? Or is this the notice? I'm looking at Sean.
So this, this would just be the continuation. We as staff would probably want to send out notice to others who have already participated in this and, and just to publicize whatever the new changes would be. But it's all continuation of the same process.
So we don't have to re-notice it at like, at the state or, you know?
We will have to read, we will have to provide notice to the state on whatever the new amendments are.
Okay.
Yep.
So does 30 days, does the September 28th give us enough time to do that? I guess is the question, to create changes, notice it at the state level, and get it back to council.
It's 35 days for the state, so as long as I have something, I can tell them soon.
And they treat amendments a little different, so they, they should be okay with this change. But, but they, they can always object as well.
I guess I'm looking at the staff and the applicant. Do we have enough information from the council to bring back changes in order to, in a quick timeframe to get that back to the state and to the September 28th? Everybody feel comfortable with that? I'm sorry that we're doing this by Zoom and I can't see everybody.
I think so.
What are you specifically asking, Sherwin?
Well, Aquila and the applicant, I think. So maybe Mimi.
We, we think we've gotten good feedback from city council and we can turn around the amendment pretty quickly. We're, we're still trying to figure out exactly what the notice to the state needs to be, so we can talk about that with staff. We may have a little more breathing room than we all think if that notice isn't triggered. But we think we've got feedback from, from council.
Okay. I feel comfortable now, Mayor, thank you.
All right. All right, so September 28th, we'll reconvene on this item. All right. Thank you all for attending and giving us your feedback and your thoughts. I guess we'll be chatting again on the 28th on this item of September. Okay, so moving on, let's see. I think that was the last item on our agenda. We had nothing removed from consent, so we wrap up tonight with council communications. All right, communications from the council. Don't see any. I don't have a motion to adjourn for this evening. I got a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting for this evening. All in favor, just say aye or put your thumb up.
Aye.
Aye.
Good evening, and thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.